Okay, you're all.
All right, thank you. Welcome. Good evening, everybody. Today is February 26th. The Foxborough Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll go over the agenda and it's quite lengthy tonight. At 6:30, we, actually at 4:30 and at 6:30, the Selectmen met over at the Foxborough Commons with the Foxborough Lions Club to look at the proposed lights, lighted sign that's proposed on the common. So that's already done. Seven o'clock, we'll have citizens' input. At 7:05, Chairman's update. 7:06, I guess that update's only a minute. At 7:06, Bob Cutler's gonna talk to us about the dual election, whether it's gonna be in April or our traditional May because of the state elections. At 7:15, Selectman Brew is gonna talk about the Taunt, the Strong Town Manager Act. We have a panel of people coming in to help us with that. At 7:40, we have an advertised public hearing for the application for the New England Revolution 2013 soccer schedule at Chillette Stadium. At eight o'clock, we've invited the Mass Gaming Commission in to discuss the gaming regulations with respect to the proposed development over in Plainville. And then we'll have question and answer following that. At 8:30, we have a continued public hearing from a few weeks past regarding so, okay, this is the application for Jake and Joe's. We had a meeting last week and then previously to try to finalize their permit. At 8:45, we're gonna talk about, a quick update on the Post 2013 Storm. At nine o'clock, we're gonna talk about the personal wage bylaw changes proposed by Selectman Coppola. At 9:15, we're gonna discuss the indemnification agreement related to the Kenny Chesney, Taylor Swift, and Bon Jovi concerts. And at 9:30, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss deployment of security personnel. So with that, I was gonna ask Linda, but you're running against me, so I'm not gonna ask you. Diana, do you wanna?
Hey, all my supporters remember this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So being seven o'clock, is there anyone for citizens' input? Seeing nobody. I'll give you a brief update under Chairman's update. I just wanna let you know, I did meet with, a few weeks ago, with Town Moderator Frank Spillane and several members of the Advisory Committee. And we kicked off different suggestions and issues around the town meeting, the warrant articles, things that we can be doing better, some of the correspondence between Advisory Committee, the Board of Selectmen, who puts the warrants on the warrant articles, what order they go in, how they're advertised, how the people get input. It was all a good discussion, so we decided we're gonna have a second meeting and invite in Kevin Pecos, our Town Manager, and probably another Selectman, just so it's a little more evenly balanced between Advisory Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And there's a lot of good ideas shared back and forth. Some of them go back to some of the history of the town meeting and how it's changed and what, you know, maybe we can strive to bring some things back. So if one of you guys wanna add, jump into that, let me know. Send me an email and I'll let you know when we can do that. And just briefly, some of our items on the, hi Kevin. On the next meeting, we're gonna be presented with the capital budget. Now, we're gonna continue on with the warrant articles that's gonna start tonight and the fire department fees that were proposed to us a few meetings ago. We're gonna revisit that. And there's gonna be a good chunk of meeting time at the next meeting, March 5th, to, we've invited the craft organization to come in to talk a little bit about the history, some of the present stuff that they're doing, and some of their future plans. And I thought it was a good opportunity to just have question and answer and probably a good hour of that. So if you wanna come and ask any questions or just listen to some of their business plans and the pluses and minuses, it's a good opportunity to share some information. So that's on March 5th. And then, as I had said at the beginning, we had met out at the town common to look at the proposed sign. So we're gonna have them on the agenda, the Lions Club on the agenda, March 5th. We'll have them first on the agenda. And I hope by then we'll get some input from the Historic Commission. I think they met already and so we'll have a complete picture.
They're meeting Saturday.
Again on Saturday?
The Lions went to them first and, but they are gonna, they're gonna meet and discuss on Saturday and then come on March.
Okay. And I think some of them were there at the meeting at 4:30 and 6:30. Okay. So hopefully on March 5th, we'll have all the information on the sign and we can make a decision. So that's it for.
Jim?
Yep.
The Board had gotten a notice from the town of North Attleboro on the Governor's proposal to consolidate public housing authorities all over the state. They're having a forum on it, which is, oh, tomorrow night. Now, we set this around last week. I didn't hear back from anybody, but they called today to see if anybody was going. I'm not going. It's really not a town administrator issue. It's a political issue. But if any of you think you're going, could you either let me know tonight before we break up? We'll call Christopher C. in the morning and then we'll call an RSVP that you're gonna be there.
Okay. So that's tomorrow night, Wednesday at seven to nine?
Seven o'clock at.
At the police facility.
North Attleboro Police Station, just right next to Town Hall if you're, don't know where that is.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So we have one issue that came up because of the state primary, which is gonna be on April 30th. A lot of towns are considering whether they wanna combine the local elections, which are, ours is in May, into one election, which is on April 30th. So is Bob Cutler? Yeah, do you want us to present? And I'm gonna recuse myself only because I did announce that I'm, I did pull papers to run for Selectman and where, whether it's in April or May, if they're voting for Selectman, I think I have a conflict, so.
And ditto, 'cause I am running against Jim, so.
Okay.
Oh, I love this place.
Who's in charge?
I guess so.
Hey, Bob, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
So I'll just give you a little background here first and then if you have questions, I'll answer those. As you know, typically our annual election is on the first Monday in May and that's called by our town bylaws. But because of the resignation of John Carey, it caused a special election. So we have the primary, which is April 30th, and then June 25th is the actual election. So because of that, the state decided to pass legislation that allows towns who have a town election within a 30-day period of either the primary or the special election. It allows you to combine your town election with either one of those. And so since ours is six days after the primary, we fall within that 30-day period. So we would be allowed to combine the town election with the primary, which is on April 30th. Of course, our election would have to move to that date. You know, the primary doesn't move to the town election day. So that legislation was passed on or about January 31st. Now, a bunch of towns have already voted to do that and a list has been going around and up to a couple of weeks ago, it was approximately 28 towns had already voted to do that. The ones in the area are Norfolk, Plainville, and Rentham. And I know in speaking with the town clerk in Easton yesterday, they passed to combine them in Easton yesterday. So there's quite a few that have already decided to do that. So I guess the real question is, you know, how does that affect Foxborough and our issues here in town? A question came up, well, because of this legislation, does this affect our bylaw? No, it does not. The statute actually is good through, I believe, July of this year. July 31st, 2013, it expires. So it doesn't have any long-lasting effect on how you handle town meetings, town elections, and all those kind of things. So it's just a one-time deal unless, of course, in the future, there's another special election and then they would have to pass legislation at that time. So I've kinda gone through a little bit in my own mind, what are some of the pros and cons. And so I'll give you my thoughts on those and then if you have questions on any of the others, we can talk about those. So as far as pros, obviously funding, all towns are concerned about how is this gonna affect our funding and things like that. We will have some additional costs that are separate and apart from what the state election would be. We have our own printing costs for ballots and things like that. None of that is gonna change. There is also some discussion that the state will reimburse us, as they have in the past when there was a special election. We've been reimbursed, since I've been here, we had a special election for Ted Kennedy's seat. So we were reimbursed for those two elections for our election costs associated with that. Any of these state elections, the state pays for the ballots. It pays for a lot of the processing of software and things like that associated with the election. So they pay for that anyways. So where we would save is if we were to have one election, we wouldn't have to pay police for a second election. We wouldn't have to pay setup and breakdown of the polls for more than one election. That's the big area where we would save. Now, there's been some discussion amongst town clerks in, we're hearing that the state may not reimburse funding if we combine elections. So we might not save as much as we thought we would initially, but we still have savings 'cause you don't have to pay those additional costs for more than one election. So I think from that perspective, it still would be, it still would make sense to combine the elections for savings of resources. The other thing it does for you is you have less disruption. Now, we, every time we have an election, we impose on the schools because they have to, you close down the jam, they have to close that end of the school for access and things like that. So they've been great for, to us and for us, so we appreciate all they've done for us in the past. They, you know, give us the janitors to help break down and they've been very supportive. So if we have to do that twice in a week, it may be a little bit cumbersome for them. So that's another consideration. It's also, you know, requiring the poll workers come out twice in a week, so that could be a little difficult, and for voters too. I mean, you would think, you would hope that voters have the feeling that I have this obligation, I need to go out and vote. And we know what kind of turnouts we get for typical local elections and even primaries, they're low. I think the last primary we had in September, we had maybe 17% turnout. So by combining them, you might have a better turnout because you're gonna have the people who come out usually for the annual elections and then you're gonna have the people who do come out for the state elections. So maybe it would be a bigger turnout. Some of the things that could be considered cons, there may be a little bit of confusion because you're gonna have two separate sets of ballots, you're gonna have two separate sets of voting lists. But we've talked to many clerks that have done it. I saw Marie today, she was in, she's very workable, you know, proper planning and it worked out fine. So I'm not as concerned about that as I was. I also had some concern initially if there was a partisan election, especially if there was only, let's say there were only a race in the Democratic side but not on the Republican side, you might have a skewed voter turnout. But now it appears it's gonna be a race on both sides, so I'm not as concerned about that as I once was. So, you know, I don't think, you know, it's obviously be a little bit more of a setup and all of that, but I think it can work. And the thing that is selling me a little bit more now is that you're gonna have two elections within a week's period at times. So if it was spread out, if it were three weeks, I probably wouldn't even consider it. But because it's so close together, you know, I think it makes more sense to probably do it, so. Anybody have any questions or?
Do you wanna take some input from the audience if they want before we bring it to the board?
Sure.
Is anybody in the audience having, you know, something to say on this matter? Seeing none. Ginny, anything?
No, actually, the response I've gotten from people, it's actually evenly matched.
Really?
I mean, the same number of people who didn't want to combine was equal to the number of people who did wanna combine.
Yeah.
And then there were some people who could care less. You know, they don't care when it is, you know? So I'm thinking if whatever, where, Bob, you run the elections really, I would go with what you suggest.
Okay.
I mean, I haven't had much feedback from people and no really strong feelings either way. I think taking into consideration the disruption at the schools.
Yeah, they were gonna have another one in June, which I think, they should be out of school by then, so that wouldn't be a big problem.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, if we get more snow days, they may be pushed into that, so that could be a consideration as well.
Yeah. And then, you know, saving the detail pay also is good.
So I take it, Bob, you'd like us to combine the elections?
I think it makes sense at this point just because of the close proximity of the two, but that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Stand a motion?
Motion to combine the primary and the town election for.
30th.
April 30th, 2013. Second.
More discussion?
Oh, it just, if you could explain that this is not gonna affect the date of town meeting.
Correct.
Town meeting will be the second Monday of the month of May.
And it's still gonna stay on one warrant, as we usually do with the town election and town meeting. So that's not gonna change.
Okay.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Three oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, the next item, and this is something that I brought up very early, the Strong Town Managers Act. And the reason I initiated it quite a while ago was it was right after we had negotiated a contract with Kevin Pecos, who came in and was hired under the Strong Town Manager Act.
We have a couple more guests in the other room, by the way. I had everybody wait in my office just 'cause.
Okay. Do you wanna call them?
Get them all, 'cause they wanna, they wanna hear what you say.
Sure, okay.
You want me to get them?
I don't think it's a capacity issue though, is it? Are we getting close? Is it more than?
No. No, we're fine.
I think there's two people.
Oh, okay.
Right? Three, two, four, three all together?
Just five.
Five. John, Leo.
George.
And two is five, right. Everybody's here.
Yep.
Did you want to let them sit here?
On his head?
And then?
How many are in the table? Five?
Four.
Four of them.
Thank you. So, as I was saying, when Kevin was hired, he was hired under contract under the Strong Town Managers Act. Previously, Andy Gaila was a Strong Town Manager and both of them have different styles. So, what I started hearing almost on day one is, why is Kevin doing this? He's not supposed to do this. You know, there's certain powers and abilities and responsibilities a Strong Town Manager has and it wasn't always implemented with a different style that Andy had. So, when I looked at the Strong Town Managers Act and I looked at the Board of Selectmen's responsibilities, they're quite different and there's some overlap. At the time that the Strong Town Managers Act was implemented, and I think the panelists are going to discuss that, we changed government a little bit. We went from three selectmen to five selectmen, so it's a continuing process. So, I thought it was a good time to revisit it. I'm not in favor of changing it, not in favor of keeping it, but I think it helps us and it helps Kevin if people understand who has the responsibilities for contracts and negotiations and budgets and who doesn't and where we work together. So, I had asked for a selectman to step up. Lorraine had put together a group of, called a panel, that's going to discuss it with us tonight. They've, in our packets, there's the report from 1989, there's copies of our Strong Town Managers Act and our town act has the Board of Selectmen's rules and regs in there also. So, at that, I'll turn it over to Lorraine and she can introduce and take it from there.
Would all panels like to come up here to the table? Do we have enough chairs?
Is it safe here?
Here.
Safe here.
I'm just going to get out some...
I always get nervous when there's more lawyers than...
Name tags here so that we can keep everybody straight.
Not when they're defending you, you know?
That's right.
Or prosecutors.
I know.
I'm sure you know we're all, we are on camera and on microphone, so I think that should be enough microphones, right?
Okay. I'm going to take a crack at introducing all of you. I did a little Googling before we came in tonight, so I'll start with Attorney Dee Moskis. Dee joins us. He's a senior partner at Myrick O'Connell out of Worcester, specializes in labor, employment and employee benefits law. Through peer recognition of his professional achievements, he was named a super lawyer from 2006 to 2012 in his field and often presents information on the topic of town charters and Town Manager Act. Attorney Leo Pellequin is a partner in the law firm of Collins, Lachrin and Pellequin. Leo has represented the town for 100 years now, I think?
Well, that would make me 155, but a long time.
A long time. As our labor counsel and specializes in labor and employment law, Leo is a member of the Mass Municipal Association and sits on the Labor and Personnel Committee for that. Richard Kellher, retired Brookline Town Administrator, worked in that capacity from 1994 to 2010, responsible for a $230 million operating budget and $178 million capital improvement budget, I'm jealous. Currently, a professor at Suffolk University Center for Public Management.
That's being generous.
Okay. Attorney John Mitchellmore, John's a resident of Foxborough and is chairman of our housing authority. John was a member of the Government Study Task Force that brought forward the Town Manager Act and was passed by town meeting voters in 2004. And George Bell is also a resident of Foxborough and has served for many years, another 100 years also, as chairman...
163.
163, okay. As chairman of the Stadium Advisory Committee, George also participated with John on that task force that brought forward the recommendations to improve our government structure. So, what I wanted to ask if we could do was to have John and George give us some background as to the process that your Government Study Committee went through as there was a review of the study that had been performed by a consultant and, you know, how you came to the conclusions that you did in terms of banking recommendations for the Town Manager Act.
Well, first, I thank you for giving me a copy of that. I did reread it and a lot of the history kind of came back at me. As you know, that the Town Government Study Committee report was initially done in 1989 and one of the, the big thing that came out of that was the consolidation of the finance operation. You may remember that prior to that, the town treasurer was elected and that took a, that was a very politically trying and difficult time. I think it actually failed the first time through to do that. And so, that committee, initial committee in 1991 or whatever, that was the only thing that they wanted to put forward and they finally did get it through. Then the report kind of lay dormant for about 10 years. And then, the Board of Selectmen decided that we ought to, you know, get a former committee to revisit that and start to implement some of the other recommendations or at least review those recommendations that have been made in there. Quite a bit had happened over that period of time. One of the things was that the quote town administrator role within the state, I think there was a quote within the report that there were 50 town administrator-type governments in the state. By 2002 or '03, there were significantly more. So, that whole process had evolved and more towns are doing it for, you know, some of the same obvious reasons that we had. One of the biggest things that we had to face was that the town administrator at the time was not, there was no bylaw governing what the town administrator was doing. There was no, it was not a part of our charter. So, Andy admitted when we interviewed him on that one night was that his job description changed every May. And that became a problem. You know, there was, there were some, historically, there were some very strong boards of selectmen and historically, there were some very weak boards of selectmen. So, that became a problem. There was not continuity, there was not consistency, and that was one of the things we had to look at, along with the fact that there was no, really no statutory authority for what we were doing. There was stuff that had been delegated to Andy that really the selectmen did not have the authority to do and that was beginning to get a little scary. I think once we consolidated the finance end of it, lots of this stuff came to light that really was being done and really shouldn't have been. So, it was really more of a thing that we really had to do. One of the toughest things we had to do in that committee was to depersonalize what we were looking at. You know, we all knew and liked Andy, but we had to say, you know, this is, we're not talking about Andy, we're talking about a job and whatever you call it, whether it's town administrator. And, you know, at that time, town managers had become more, had become the more used term. That's what we had to look at. And so, that's what I think we focused on was to try to, to try to implement those recommendations. Now, I don't know that we ever talked about the strong and weak town manager. I don't really think that there was any kind of either statutory or charter-type language that says a town manager is strong, a town manager is weak. What we felt was that the town manager description and the town manager authority should be as broad as possible so that depending on the nature of the boards of selectmen, depending on, you know, what else was happening in town, that the town manager would have the ability to continuously and consistently run the town, obviously realizing that the Board of Selectmen signed the paycheck and that they have the authority to control what the town manager is doing. I don't believe that the town manager has any independent authority to do something contrary to what the Board of Selectmen would tell them to do or... I think that one of the other examples is the, is the, under the Education Reform Act, superintendent of schools has significantly more authority than would probably be wise for the superintendent to exercise. And, but that's just, but again, it's, the role is the communication between the executive board, which is the Board of Selectmen or the school committee, and their chief operating officer, which is the town manager or the superintendent. The other reason that we kind of had in the back of our mind was we wanted to make that a, we thought the town manager term was better at, in 2002 than it would have in 1989 because, again, as Kevin can tell you, the profession has grown and expanded and there are more people in it, there are now people who are trained to do it, people, there's an experience level where people are turning over and moving along. So, that was, we felt that the town manager was a better term than a town administrator. And the other thing we knew is, again, trying to depersonalize it, but we knew that Andy wasn't going to be here forever and that at some point, we were going to have to grow and compete for a person who had ability and experience and that person with ability and experience was going to want to have the same kind of authority that they would have in a, in any kind of similar situation. So, we thought that, again, giving the town manager the broader authority rather than the narrow authority and with the idea that, as you said, Jen, that there are some things that overlap with realizing that the selectmen were not going to give up everything. This was in a mayor's situation, this was appointed, it was supervised by the Board of Selectmen. We thought that that was the best way to do it. And quite frankly, there was not an awful lot of discussion about that. I think we were all pretty much in agreement. The area that was the most contentious was going from the three to five number board of selectmen. But you had to, we also saw how that was going to kind of work together with a, with a town manager. We had an interview with the town manager in Mansfield who, despite his quote off-field problems, is a very, has a lot of insight into the field. And he said, we asked him, you know, would he prefer working with a three-person board or a five-person board? And he said, as a town manager, I would prefer a three-person board because I'm only dealing with three people. But he said, quite frankly, for the town's benefit, I think a five-person board is better. And that was a very, I thought that was a, I thought that was a very interesting insight. And I think that that was, so we, we kind of were, felt that the, having the strong town or the town manager with broad powers was going to be kind of, there was, the check and balance of that was going to be the five-person board of selectmen and that you weren't going to have one or two people that the town manager could essentially control or run or the reverse, that one or two people was going to control the town manager. That with five people, that there would be a check and balance that would work. So, that was, you know, working those two ideas together, I think, was what we came, why we came up with those two. And I think that they were interconnected, at least my view they were. George has a...
Yeah, I'd like to echo the general feelings that John had. And, you know, I think that the committee's perspective was to look at this as a best practice in relation to the management of the town and looking at the town and looking at its growth, looking at from, to manage a town the size of Foxborough is to look at having the Board of Selectmen focus more on goal-setting and as well as policy, policy leadership. And as John said, it really dovetailed to going from three to five gave it the ability so that it wouldn't be as individualized from a strong or a weak selectmen's perspective, but, so that they would more, and they still have had the ability to deal with overriding. I mean, the majority of selectmen say that what is, the town manager is doing is not what they would want, they still have the ability to override that. But from a day-to-day administrative running of a town of the significant size of Foxborough, we felt that that role should be left to, call it a strong town manager, in private business, say you'd call it a general manager who then would, you know, be to the, more to the Board of Selectmen in this case, so that they would, in essence, oversee in a global sense, but the strong town manager would handle the day-to-day administrative function.
Okay. I wanted to ask if, Rich, you might comment, you were a strong town manager for the town, for the city of Brookline, correct?
Well, my career path in this business was a little different than most. I've worked in both cities for strong mayors. I had worked for Kevin White, worked most closely with Ted Mann when he was the mayor of Newton for 22 years and then made the switch to the town administrator position in Brookline where I finished up for, after 15 years there. And I've seen the broad range of the mix of possibilities and just to put it out on the table, if you ask me, probably contrary to some of my colleagues here, what the best form of local government would be depending upon the size and the build-out of the community, actually, strong mayor from my perspective in terms of the executive and political responsibilities being blended in a way that the entire community can focus on. That's not happening for Foxborough nor for any other community the size of this town. But as been mentioned, the change that was made here a few years ago is on the side of history in terms of the evolution that's going on statewide, if not the broad trend. Indeed, in terms of cities and towns, there's been probably more transition from towns to the city form in larger communities, particularly in the South Georgia, south of Boston, reflecting this, this desire and this need to move to a stronger executive function in local governments. And I'll just pick up on a couple of things and I'll stop yakking because there's a lot of wisdom here. I'm sure it's no surprise to you that there, I heard the term collective bargaining mentioned earlier, I heard the CIP, that there are going to be tensions between the elected board and the town administration from time to time and those kinds of things. I'm retired, I can speak frankly now. It used to drive me crazy. Unions would have back-channel conversations with, with members of the Board of Selectmen individually and no matter how much I was assured, well, you know, it's just a cup of coffee, we're not conceding anything, it just, it complicated things at the bargaining table. And we were constantly backfilling on that type of thing because as a matter of policy, the board and the town historically had delegated to a negotiating team the responsibility for, for collective bargaining. But from my perspective, that was somewhat of a fact of life and it's not, if, I'm sure it's not going on here in Foxborough, but if it were, something that would be a little bit of an itch to scratch from time to time during the collective bargaining cycle. It's no surprise that it's taking place. Commitment to the CIP, the boards from their elected position can play, play a huge policy and cheerleading role in that regard. It's not easy to sort of turn the ship of state, so to speak, to allocate resources to the capital improvement program. I'll just close by noting that in reality, in Brookline, I was not in a strong town manager form. I was in actually a very weak, black-letter position vis-à-vis my, vis-à-vis the actual authority of the board and the finance committee and town meeting. But what had happened there over time, going back to my predecessors, and I think we nurtured this along, is that the culture and the politics and the expectations of the community were that there was going to be a strong executive. It was in the best interest of the town to do that, even though people who understood that intellectually from time to time actually fought it on occasion, you know? So, at the end of the day, in terms of the form, moving to a stronger executive, I think is in the best interest of most any community. There'll be aches and pains along the way, but it's, as was mentioned earlier by some of the previous speakers, it's a matter of the communication and the interrelationships that really make it work as a cohesive executive.
Thank you, Rich. Dee, would you like to comment?
Sure. I agree with Mr. Kellher's comments except I do not support having in smaller communities an elected mayor. And even though we're personal friends, we disagree on that. But I do agree that the trend in government and some, I think, slower in Massachusetts and other places in government is to enhance the executive function because of the complexity of collective bargaining, environmental issues, issues dealing with diversity. So, there's a lot of... a lot of significant, complicated technical matters today that need to be handled professionally. And unless you have a strong executive, that's not possible. So the trend, what you developed is consistent with the trend. And I think it was adopted in 2004. And so maybe predated how, how this thing is happening and it predicted that. Historically, there's been three levels of, there's no statutory definition, but there's a practice, three levels of, of type of form of administration. The first one is the executive secretary, and it's out of Chapter 41, which provided for the town meeting to authorize the selectmen to appoint an executive secretary. And that person was the agent of the Board of Selectmen. The second level is where you had a town administrator. And that term has generally been, where it's a weak executive. That term is applied generally to a person who is a weak executive, that, for example, they don't have the appointment power, or the appointment power is subscribed significantly, so that the, the selectmen are making the appointments in many, many areas. And they don't do collective bargaining, and they, they may not do other functions. They're more of a technical person. They do, they'd be the chief purchasing agent in the community, and they would be performing that, those type of functions. But executive, traditional executive functions, or appointing authority and budget-making, collective bargaining, those three principal functions that a town manager does, is, in general, town administrators would not be performing those functions. Then you have a town manager, and as I've read your charter, you invest in the town manager the appointing authority, you invest in the collective bargaining authority, subject to the board's approval of contracts, and you have the town manager prepare the budget. So the town manager here is an executive and has, has those executive powers. And so that's, that's consistent, like I said, with the trend relative to the, what's happening in government today. The key is, is the previous speakers have said, you have to develop the ability for communication between the selectmen, who, under this charter, as I see, and under the modern charters, is the policymaking and licensing authority of the town. And the town manager's exercise of those policies, implementing those policies. And is there, is there a dialogue so that there's, there's a understanding between the two bodies of how that's to function? And so that's the key. And to be able to do that, and hopefully, Foxborough has that type of communication. And I think, you know, it seems tonight, just a few minutes here, that you do get along, and that you try to function and on a unified basis, respecting the authority that the town manager has, the executive, and the town manager expecting your authority as the chief elected officials to determine the policies and the rules for the town.
Okay.
Greg, just interrupt for a minute. Thank you. We've got a public hearing at 7:40, so if you don't mind, we'll open it and then we'll continue. And people from the craft organization, can you stick around for a little bit? You want to read that into the public hearing notice?
The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, February, on Tuesday, February 26, 2013, at 7:40 PM to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the New England Revolution Games, including potential international matches and double headers at Gillette Stadium. Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough revised general bylaws, Articles 5, Section 6, and also stadium rules and regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 26, 2013, beginning at 7:40 PM in the Andrew A. Gallow Jr. Meeting Room, 40 South Street, to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the New England Revolution Games, including potential international matches and double headers. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. All applications for these events are on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you. So we'll continue that till after this discussion.
So Leo, you've now been with us through all of this transition. Could you comment? You've seen bumps along the way.
Sure. I think that's what you described, this kind of growing pains. I think, having worked with both Andy and Kevin, to be fair, Andy was used to a different role. You know, the act came in, but he didn't all of a sudden roar in here one day and change his, change his style. You know, he wasn't, he wasn't looking to, you know, to be, be that way. Over time, you know, we gravitated into that, into that role. Kevin, I think anybody that works in one of these positions for any length of time would prefer to be in a strong position than in a weak position. I mean, that's, a lot of people start out in the business in the weaker position and, and kind of a learning curve there, and then go into a stronger position. And once you've gone into a stronger position, you certainly don't want to go backwards. You want to go in the other direction. I think it's, it's always difficult to, you know, strong or weak, I guess, you want him to be weak when he disagrees with you. And you want him to be strong when he agrees with you, which is, that's, that's the most difficult thing to, to kind of become accustomed to. But, you know, I think here in, in, there were a lot of things, for example, in your, in your personnel bylaw that had been, had been dormant anyways for a long period of time. But I think one of the, one of the problems here, and I know you're in the process of resolving that, is that the bylaw kind of sat there with a lot of provisions in there that really are no longer applicable. But every once in a while, when someone goes looking for something that might benefit them, they grab something out of the bylaw and say, well, it's still there. And, and they don't want to read the Town Manager Act, which says that it effectively repeals those provisions that are inconsistent with the Town Manager Act. And that, that's where you run into some of the issues. I know there's an effort now to kind of clean up the bylaw for consistency purposes. But I think in any community where you have controversial decisions to be made, particularly when it comes to personnel matters and the like, you know, there's always going to be some, some level of disagreement. And I think, you know, over time, I've seen that it has evolved here so that the communication kind of smoothes over those, those rough edges. Just because the town manager is a strong town manager doesn't mean that, that he doesn't tell the board what's going on and what he's doing, what he's intending to do. And I think, you know, that's, that's been kind of a learning process with, with someone with a different personality than, than, than your prior town manager. Not saying one's a good personality evaporate, just a different personality, a different approach, and used to a different approach. But, you know, the bumps have, have kind of flattened out. Every once in a while, something arises. But for the most part, I think everyone's doing a good job with it.
Thank you. Just, I have one question about the personnel wage bylaw. There is some place in here. It mentions that the administration, the handling, I guess, of personnel issues will be per the processes that are in the bylaw, the personnel wage bylaw.
Correct.
So when you say that the Town Manager Act effectively repeals...
Some of it.
But there, the processes that are in place within that personnel wage bylaw are potentially still, could be useful.
It, it could have been clearer, but ultimately, Section 6 says all bylaws that are not inconsistent survive. So you might have a process that's inconsistent with the town manager powers under the Town Manager Act. You know, we've run into this, for example, employee grievances. I mean, it, there used to be a provision, or there is a provision in the bylaw for employee grievances. But if you, you can't reconcile the Town Manager Act in, in his ability to set compensation, the position's ability to set, set compensation, and do other things with a provision in, in the bylaw that might indicate that someone that was unhappy with their compensation could go to the Wage and Personnel Board and, and get the Wage and Personnel Board to make that decision. So that's one of those issues that I described earlier, where there's, the inconsistency is, is continued to be on paper. And so I think naturally, human nature is, if it's down there and it's in writing, then it must have some effect. But, you know, certainly, there are processes that the Town Manager follows as essentially your personnel administrator that are consistent with the bylaw in terms of due process and things like that. I think that's what the act was intended to mean.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I do, Lauren.
Richard, I said the same thing you said openly earlier, that I think it's time to maybe move on to a mayor-type government in Foxborough. And that would create a city council, correct? Is that, well, how many members would be on that?
It depends upon the charter.
On the charter. Typically, in a population of 17,000, would you have five?
I, I don't know that there are any cities in the state that have a population as low as 17,000.
Right.
Is there a cutoff?
Twelve, well, 12,000 is the minimum you'd have to be.
For a mayor?
For a city.
For a city, okay.
So, I mean, it just seems to be, the way things are going, the way I've observed it up here, it seems that a mayor-form of government might work better in the future for Foxborough. Maybe not right now, but coming up in the future, because you always get, like Andy had said, I think, John, you said it, every year I get a different job title before the Strong Town Managers Act. And I could see that happening. But I just think in the future, because it's becoming more and more overwhelming to be on the Board of Selectmen, and basically, it's a voluntary role in the community. And I don't think you're going to get the justification the town deserves out of it in the future without implementing some kind of salary or something in the future. It would be something, it'd be more, I think, it's changing, is my point. And, I mean, it became, you know, in 2005, a very 10-hour-a-week job, and sometimes now it's a 30 or 40-hour-a-week job. And I don't think in the future, if it keeps moving like this, especially with the situations that arise more and more, it's compounding. I think that, I agree with you. I think it's the best form of government for the future for Foxborough. I think it's the way I would like to see the town move forward.
Let, let me just make a quick observation response. I, in terms of communities of the size and topographic, if you will, of Foxborough, I'm probably talking about decades, not years, if there'd be movement among communities at that, that point in the municipal landscape moving to mayoral form. But the trend has been there for larger communities, particularly those recently in the 40,000 to 50,000 range. And I know Dee and I do have different opinions about it. But my key point about that is that, at the end of the day, you're talking about executive authority, and how do you make that best work? And if city is not in the long, near-term, intermediate-term horizon for a community like Foxborough, then how does executive authority really get played out? And I'll just close my rhetorical question there by observing that I found myself in some situations where I was actually able to accomplish more in my role as a weak town administrator, because people expected me to exercise leadership for the community than some of the mayors I had worked with in similar situations in the past were able to accomplish in areas like relationships with the schools and the school budget and, and that type of thing. So there are trade-offs either way, but I think for a community this size, the, the focus really needs to be on how do you get, how do you, how do you get to a more effective executive over time? And some of the other corollary structural issues will fall into place from that outlook.
Just a little bit of history, Mark, because I've been around, I'm older than dirt around here, but I've been around a long time. I was on the search committee for the first executive secretary bank in the 19, early 1970s. And the, the person who was proposing this was, or the selectman at the time, was a man named Ed Fox, who was one of the, historically, I think, people who've been around a long time would say he was probably one of the best selectmen we ever did have. And he was an executive at the, the phone company. And what he would do is he would work all day in Boston and come out, he'd come into the town hall at night, and then he would spend his whole day on Saturday at the town hall, you know, doing selectmen's duties. So, you know, the cycle, you know, increases. And, you know, when he was elected, he probably didn't have to do that. But by the end of the time, he, this is what he was doing. And a lot of the stuff he was doing was really administrivia, but there was no, because there was no executive secretary to take care of any of that stuff. That's why that, that process. And then, you know, the, the whole cycle went down, so the selectmen weren't doing that, you know. And then built up again, and then went down again, and then built up again. And I think, and yet, I think turning Foxborough into a city, which would have a mayor type, I think that's a little bit of a reach. But I think that, you know, I think that the, the work of the town, the Board of Selectmen and the work of the town manager is going to get more difficult and more complex as the world we live in gets more difficult and more complex. And that was one of the things that we did deal with was that, and again, one of the ideas of going to the five-person board was that you were going to have an opportunity to have people, more people with different skills, different outlooks, different constituencies, and hopefully bringing all of that to the table, as opposed to, you know, having it on, you know, a three-person board, which, again, historically, was very often a one-person board. So I think that that's, you know, kind of where we're going. And you're right, it's not, it's a thankless job, but...
I'm not saying it's thankless at all. I appreciate that. But what I really, I've seen change in the last eight, nine years now. And it's very difficult. And you have one of 32 entities in the whole world in your town, which really makes it even more difficult, because there's constant situations you're dealing with, with, you know, games and everything else, concerts. So my point is, I've, more than anything, I've witnessed that there's too much on Kevin's plate to be able to be a strong town manager and deal with that at the same time. So I would actually, if, we weren't going to move in that direction. I wasn't saying right away, I'm saying it could evolve to that in the next 10 years. I think the town would really, and this was thought of many times with Andy, that we need an assistant town manager in the town, because you can't, there's just not enough time in the day to do both.
We're not here to talk about budgets.
Kevin smiling after that comment.
It's always about money.
I just wanted to make a, you want to say? Just to kind of wrap it up a little bit. I got a lot of benefit reading the 1989 report that, and thank you for doing that. Look, back then, it just reminds us that, you know, government does change, circumstances do change. Some of the recommendations, you know, going from a finance director that's elected versus appointed and under contract, you made recommendations back in 1989 to merge all the different departments into the DPW. It took us a while, but, you know, I think there was some insight back then. And I think we would be remiss if we didn't have these discussions. And I just wanted to remind everyone, we're not having it because we're not happy with our strong town manager, or town manager. I think we just have to look to the future. And, you know, I, I'm not in agreement that the city is the, and the mayor is the way to go. But I think having those discussions prepares us for the, for the years to come. So, you know, it was good work in 1989, and eventually, we'll probably do another one. And who knows what the changes are going to be. But I thought this was very helpful.
Not on the committee.
I just want to thank all of you for responding to my requests, and really appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Is the mayor?
No, 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 no.
Hey, John, you're older than dirt. I'll verify that. How you doing, buddy? Nice to see you.
That's good. Good information.
Thank you.
Clear out, then we'll do the...
You have a crowd, though?
Huh? Yeah, close, close to it. You guys, you want to come up?
Sure.
All right. The public hearing that we just opened was for the, the 2013 New England Revolution Home Games, 17 of them. So, I know we know you, but if you want to introduce yourself for the record.
Jess Stevenson was the New England Patriots, New England Revolution, in Gillette Stadium.
Jim Cobry with the Patriots and Revolution.
Thanks for coming. In our packets, we have the application. It's been advertised, opened up to the board. Unless, is there a presentation you want to make, or any changes from last year?
Nope. There are no significant changes from last year. It's the standard 17-game season. Parking lots are set to open at the same time. Parking is still free. The only change is that Sections 143 through 141 have always The only change is that sections one forty-three through one forty-one have always been GA sections. Now, we're also going to open section one forty for a college season ticket package. So that'll also be a GA section. But that is really the only change this year. We're also, we're going into the third season of our East and West concourse midfield seating. We coordinate with the Chiefs on public safety and making sure that it's adequately staffed so that we've got comprehensive concourse coverage, but there are really no significant changes for two thousand and thirteen.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Just want, June eighth, is that Founder's Day?
Yes.
So that, it is Founder's Day? So, I think that's happened in the past, too, but the sharing of resources, police and fire and safety, you coordinate that pretty well with the public safety officials. And I, not to catch you off guard, George, but I know you hear from the other discussion, but...
I thank you for having both of them tonight.
Anything from the stadium advisory committee?
No, we did not see any conflicts. We had, representative of the police department didn't see any conflicts in terms of that. There weren't conflicts with other events, and we voted unanimously to recommend to you to approve based on the condition that they meet the standards of providing the facilities and expenditures to implement public safety.
Okay. And I don't see the police and fire, but there are letters in the, on the record, on file, from Chief Hatfield and Chief O'Leary, saying that there's no issues.
Just a question about indemnification agreement as part of this packet.
Sure. We're getting very close, and actually, later tonight, under a different item, I'll ask you to take a vote extending the period of time for which we're still negotiating for another thirty days. Good news is, it's very close.
I agree.
Being told through councils that a lot of good work going on, and everybody's very, very confident that it's gonna get pulled together. We just need a little bit more time. So my recommendation on this is just make it contingent on signing that later, because we don't have the document yet, and the standard conditions from police chief, fire chief, stadium advisory committee, but everything's pretty much the same as last year.
Okay. Anything else? Do we hear a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience that wanna participate? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made to close, second by Lorraine. All those in favor? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Hearing's closed. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the application for the New England Revolution games, including potential international matches and double headers at Gillette Stadium, contingent upon stadium advisory committee requirements and public safety requirements, and a signed indemnification agreement. Is that due?
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming, Jess.
Sounds good, chief. Yes.
Okay, I don't know how we did it, but we're pretty close back to schedule. This next item, there's a couple parts to it. I had reached out to the Mass Gaming Commission for the purpose of having them come and present to us the gaming regulations as it relates to being in a budding community to a host community, the Plain Ridge. I've had several discussions with Ombudsman, John Ziamba, who's here this evening. Do you wanna come up to the table? And this discussion is not really to talk about the merits of what's being proposed in Plainville. I don't think they have the full application, but really to hear from the state gaming commission, the Mass Gaming Commission, on what the rights and responsibilities, obligations, and general overall process, how we figure it out, if we have to do studies, what studies are available, and start the communication, if it's necessary, between Foxborough in Plainville or Foxborough in the applicant. The second part to this, I also wanted to question and answer if there's people that had questions from the audience with respect to the process, that they're free to ask them. And then really, the third component, I see Joe Fernandez, I had spoken to Joe and asked if he could... Joe Fernandez is the town administrator, not the strong town manager, the strong town...
That's because he's smarter than me.
Yep. Well, I was gonna say that. I've known Joe for, for how many years now? Six, very, very long time. Have you missed Susie?
Yes.
Okay. I was in front of you about twenty years ago in Plain Ridge, and you had a magic wand that you, you were the selectman there?
It disappeared.
Okay, I think, 'cause you scared the heck out of me with it. So I had asked some representation from Plainville, really to kind of bring us up to speed on where they are with the application, what studies they're doing, and hopefully at the end of this exercise, we have some good communication, we have a good understanding. We've already reached out, and Joe, I talked to you about this, to see if there's a committee, if there's any people in Foxborough that would wanna kind of put it all together and study it for the selectmen and come back to us, looking at some of the reports that you're doing, or maybe do on our own, and hopefully at the end, we have a good understanding of what's gonna happen in Plain Ridge. I have not heard, from my perspective, anyone here trying to stop Plain Ridge, but just really better understanding it, and I think this was the first step. So, at that point, I think if you wanted to introduce yourself and kind of go through your process, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I have a PowerPoint for your consideration. I'm not going to really stick to this, I know that we have limited time, but includes a lot of the information that I'll talk about tonight. First, who am I? I'm the ombudsman for the commission, and my role is, I'm a point of contact for host communities, potential surrounding communities, and I'm also a point of contact for applicants as they navigate their way through state government and with the commission. So, I'm gonna give you some of the highlights of what the commission has been doing and will be doing over the next couple of months, but I will point you to our website, which is a tremendous amount of information, www.massgaming.com. We broadcast every one of our meetings on the internet. There's detailed transcripts available of every meeting, and we summarize basically every policy that we have. We put out many, many documents for extended public comment. It's a really, really open process, and I would recommend that if you have any, if you have any questions, please take a look at that website, and I'm always available for questions as well. You may not have the time to watch the three-to-four-hour marathons that are the gaming commission meetings, so I guess, you know, I wouldn't recommend that, but please take a look at it. So perhaps it would be good for me to explain just where we are at this point in time, and what's expected in the weeks and the months ahead. We are in the process of developing the second phase of our regulations. We just recently had a deadline for submission of applications, which was part of the first phase of our licensing process. By way of information, we have a two-phase licensing process. The first phase is consistent of basically a background review of all the applicants, of their financial stability, of their general background and their character. And then, in the weeks and the months ahead, we are going to be entering into the second phase of the application process, which is the nuts and the bolts of everything. That is the gaming site, the composition of the development, what has been the outreach plan to communities, to surrounding communities, how well does it work with the economic development plans for the region. There's a tremendous number of things included in the statute that gaming applicants have to take into account when they're submitting their application. So I know that you probably have been following some of the details of what has been submitted to the commission. By way of backgrounds, the Gaming Act established three different gaming regions, and the gaming commission can award a casino in each one of those regions. Currently, Region C is on hold, pending further discussion regarding the Indian gaming proposal. But in addition to the three major casino licenses, there's also one slots license that is under consideration. So as I mentioned, we had the January fifteenth deadline, and in that, in that first phase of the application, we received eleven applications. And notably, we received four applications for slots licenses. There were two in this nearby area, Plain Ridge and the Rainham Park application, and then there are two slots applications, Mass Gaming Entertainment and PPE Casino Resorts, that are also slots licenses, but they have not indicated where they are going to finally find a place to reside. They obviously will need to do that prior to the second phase of the application, but they didn't have to do that for the Phase One process, which was entirely based on their, you know, financial character background, et cetera. So there was no site location requirement as part of the first phase. So, as I mentioned, the second phase, that is where we get into the specific components of the projects. Each application has to include a lot of detail, but it also has to include a host community agreement. Unless there is a host community agreement executed for the host community, it never reaches the commission. So that is the first phase in the process. After a community negotiates a host community agreement, it then has to put that agreement up for referendum by the community. And again, if it doesn't pass the referendum, it never ends up at the gaming commission, and we are left with the remaining applications that have been able to succeed in the local approvals. The application also includes that, the statute says that it shall include surrounding community agreements, and I'm sure that that's what you're probably a little bit more interested in talking about tonight. Just a point of note, now, surrounding communities have very important rights that are guaranteed to them by the statute, but that, those rights, they do not rise to a level of veto power such as the host community is granted under the legislation for either the referendum or the host community agreement, as I just referenced. So, after the application is submitted to us, to the commission, there will be a public hearing process. It is envisioned that it would be in the host community, but surrounding communities would be notified of that hearing process and invited to attend and participate. In addition, we will receive whatever comments we receive on each of the applications, and the commission will take that into account during its evaluation. So, the, there, as I mentioned, there are a number of different things that'll need to be included in the Phase Two, but each of the applicants will be required to do extensive studies, and one of those is required to show the regional impact and the economic effect of the project. Each of the applicants is required to certify that they're in compliance with state and local laws in regard to some of the license criteria by which we'll evaluate these proposals. They'll include assessments such as, things such as, do they maximize economic development, promote local small businesses in the tourism industry, maximize job generation and protecting existing jobs, maximize capital investment, promote diversity in the workforce among suppliers, coordinate with regional economic development plans, and then notably mitigate compulsive gambling and other negative consequences in host and surrounding communities. All right, so, to why we're here tonight, the legislation details what are host communities. As you can imagine, host communities are communities in which the proposed development will be situated, but surrounding communities are defined as, in the statute, they're defined as municipalities that are in proximity to a host community, which the commission determines will experience or are likely to experience impacts from the development or operation of a gaming establishment. In making the determination, the commission must consider the detailed plan of construction submitted by the applicant, information received from the public, and factors which shall include, but not be limited to, population, infrastructure, and distance from the gaming establishment and political boundaries. So those are the statutory factors. So, when is it decided what a surrounding community is? There are really basically two different processes. Anytime that a community and the developer agree to a surrounding community agreement, and that is put forward in the application, they are automatically deemed a surrounding community for the purposes of the gaming commission, which leads to the rights of being notified of when the public hearing is, being afforded the opportunity to, you know, provide further input to the commission, and there's funds for impact studies, and that the commission is required to evaluate the impacts on those surrounding communities. So, the first way a community is a surrounding community is when the community and the developer agree that you are a surrounding community, and a surrounding community agreement is inked between both of the parties. The second way that a community can be deemed a surrounding community, it's determined by the commission. So, for example, if an applicant and a community do not see eye to eye on whether or not that community is a surrounding community that meets the definition that is put forward in the statute, and further refinement that we have put forward in regulation, then the community can apply to the commission to be determined to be a surrounding community. Pursuant to the statute, the commission cannot make that decision on whether or not a community is a surrounding community until after, as I mentioned in the statute, until after we have received the application, the details of all of the infrastructure, the complete details about the project, and then the commission shall make that determination based on those facts, and facts that are presented by the surrounding community. One thing I will note is that there's another situation where perhaps a community and an applicant, it may be designated as a surrounding community, it may be perceived as a surrounding community by the applicant, but they have not been able to reach an agreement prior to the submission of the application to the commission. So, the law provides for the commission to have a procedure to help resolve that impasse. So, once a community is designated as a surrounding community, so after the application is filed, the community can petition the commission to be designated as a surrounding community. If the commission then designates that community as a surrounding community, it can then order a thirty-day period of negotiations. If the community and the applicant cannot resolve their differences within that thirty days, then the commission is required under the law to establish protocols and procedures for resolving that impasse. We have not developed those protocols and procedures yet. We're in the process of developing those for the regulations that I mentioned, that hopefully in first phase will be available within basically a month and promulgated in final fashion by June. But it is anticipated that you'll have a negotiation period, and hopefully the parties will be able to reach an agreement by that thirty days. If they cannot reach an agreement within that thirty days, then some protocols and procedures, such as arbitration, et cetera, could be utilized to iron out the differences between the parties. So one thing, another thing that I'll mention is, let me go through a little bit of the timetable. Mr. Chairman, you may have received an email today from us noting that on Thursday's meeting, there's going to be a very detailed discussion regarding the category-two license schedule. So the one that we have here is our best anticipated schedule. It's been up for a period of months, but the commission on Thursday is going to take another look at the schedule for a couple different reasons. One reason is that there's a potential that we may be able to conduct our, and complete our background investigations sooner than we thought for the slots licensees. But the second thing that we need to take a look at for the schedule is what I just mentioned, the protocols and procedures. Council for the commission on Thursday is going to present some ideas on how those protocols and procedures could work, and they involve a good number of days to resolve some of the issues. So, the schedule that we have here is subject to some substantial modification, you know, by the end of this week and within the next month. I've told the commission numerous times that it really makes sense for us to get some very concrete dates as soon as we think that we can, and that's part of what the commission is trying to do this week and over the next couple of weeks. Even though, you know, it's still very early in the year, these deadlines are going to rapidly approach, and people need time to understand the impacts, not only in the host communities, but in the surrounding communities.
Excuse me? On page eleven, it mentions definition of a limited surrounding community. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so, we recently put out a draft definition of surrounding communities. We solicited... We solicited comment on that. We're in the process of looking at the comments that have been received on that definition. One of the, one of the components of that draft definition is that we defined a surrounding community such that if an applicant decides to provide dollars to a community for the purposes of evaluating impacts, that community would not automatically be deemed a surrounding community for the purposes of the application in the fall. And the reason why we did that is because applicants, if they weren't exactly sure on whether or not a community is a surrounding community, and they felt that it might disadvantage them later in the process to label a community, a surrounding community, early in the process, they may not want to be as forthcoming with dollars to provide the technical assistance necessary. So, we clarified in our regulations that just because an applicant provides dollars for technical assistance funding to a, in a community, that doesn't mean that a community is a surrounding community for the purposes of the application. So, hopefully, this'll, you know, free up at least that hurdle to potentially providing assistance to communities. So, I won't go into too much depth on this timeline, just because it is subject to change, but what we have here is January 15th. You'll see that applicants submitted their completed RFA I. It is anticipated that we may complete our review of the RFA I, the qualifications, by as early as May and as late as July. There's a, we built in a two-month period, two-plus-month period for applicants to appeal any determinations by us if we think that either an applicant or some sub-entity of an applicant is not qualified. They would have the ability to appeal that disqualification before the commission. So, we built in a couple of months' time for those appeals before we notify folks that they are either qualified or disqualified. But, in reality, that may never occur. We may not have any of those appeals, or we may have many of those. We don't know. But, the May date that I'm referencing here, May 2013, there's a potential that we might be able to complete our reviews before May 2013, shifting things a little bit earlier. We have here, host and surrounding community agreements can be executed. They could be executed as early as today, but we would imagine that communities, both host communities and surrounding communities, need time to evaluate the true impacts of what the development will comprise. Right now, throughout the Commonwealth, many different host communities are in the process of either procuring consultants themselves, or in the process of reviewing impacts themselves. It's sort of a multi-stage process whereby applicants first have to develop their own studies, get their studies ready for public dissemination, then they have conversations with host communities about those impacts. Host communities will take a look at those impacts, determine on their own on whether or not that is in keeping with their desires and their goals for the community, and then hopefully, as a result of the studies that are provided by the applicant and the host community, there will be a store of information that others can take a look at, including surrounding communities. That is our anticipation of how, hopefully, it should work. I noted a little bit earlier that we have four applicants for slots licenses, and to surrounding communities, that is good news. It's good news because, in the commission's belief, competition breeds better applications. And since all applicants will be evaluated based on how they are doing their outreach to surrounding communities, how they're taking care of impacts, we think that it's a good idea that, we think, we're very happy that there's competition around the state, because we think that applicants will be in a better position to help address some of the local issues that the commission will, in turn, have to take a look at when it ends up at the commission's desk. So, right now, we have an August date for conclusion of host community agreements, and that is because there is a 60- to 90-day statutory period between the conclusion of the host community agreement, the request by an applicant for a referendum, and then the actual conduction of the referendum. But, surrounding community agreements can occur during that 60- to 90-day period because there isn't a referendum required. So, they can be later, perhaps as late as the outside application date. You see that we have applicant submissions of completed RFA II's as early as July 2013 and as late as October 13, 2013. That date may likely be pushed forward, and some of the details regarding the surrounding communities will be added after that date. I mentioned funding for technical reviews. Under the Gaming Act, 50,000 of the applicant's $400,000 application fee is reserved for host and surrounding communities. For any folks who've actually conducted some of these studies, they've probably realized that, especially if you're taking a look at many, many different communities, 50,000 is probably not anticipated to take care of all of the studies that would be necessary, even at the host community level. So, an applicant, if an applicant agrees to amount in excess of that 50,000 for a host community, or agrees to, for example, 50,000 for a host community and some sum for a surrounding community, it is required to submit the additional dollars to the gaming commission, which we in turn could then grant back out to the communities in the form of a community disbursement. One thing I want to mention is that there's, in addition to the direct funding from applicants, applicants can fund directly to host and surrounding communities, as long as it's in conformity with local law, that there is appropriations for those funding. We have the process whereby applicants can afford the money to us, and then we in turn grant those monies out to the communities. But there are a couple of other potential ways that communities can get assistance with reviews. The commission is very mindful of the fact that many communities are just in reliance on volunteer help, there's, you know, a constant strain on resources. So, they've commissioned me, they've asked me to try to find out how regional planning agencies could play a role in helping communities evaluate local impacts. Obviously, even if you went forward with your, with a consultant of your own, there still would be a strain on municipal time and resources, such as procurement of consultants and the like. So, and especially with many different surrounding, potential surrounding communities that may have the same needs, the commission thought it would be a good idea for us to explore whether or not the expertise at the regional planning agencies could help surrounding communities evaluate these impacts, and that the applicants could engage in a relationship with the surrounding communities to help analyze these.
I just have a question. At what point would a potential surrounding community be able to apply to the applicant for the mitigation money?
The community disbursements grant is on our website right now. It does require the signature of both the applicant and the community, either the host or the surrounding community, so that could be done at any time. What we are encouraging is that potential surrounding communities have a lot of dialogue with applicants, so that they can determine where they are in their own studies, determine where they are in the host community studies, and determine how the needs would be addressed for these reviews. Either, you know, potentially through a regional planning agency, through direct studies, through just a review of the data that will be provided, or if folks have input regarding any of those studies as they're being developed, that might also be a way of getting some of these issues taken a look at. But, what we're encouraging is that all potential surrounding communities just stay in touch with applicants to try to determine the best way that they can get resources, either true dollar resources or other resources, other technical assistance resources to evaluate those impacts.
So, we should probably have representatives at any of the meetings that Plain Ridge is having with the town of Plainville?
No, not necessarily. I wouldn't say that, because Plainville will be evaluating a lot of their local impacts as well, but there are probably ways to make sure that there's an ongoing dialogue with those applicants. It's up to each potential surrounding community how it wants to organize itself, and how it wants to evaluate what happens at the, both at the commission level and at the local level. But, I would note that, you know, probably the direct conversations with the applicants is the best way to start that planning process.
Okay, thank you.
So, one other thing I'll mention in regard to surrounding community funding, as I mentioned, after the RFA II is submitted, if the commission then has to decide on whether or not a community is a surrounding community, and if it orders negotiations at that point, there is a potential that funding for technical assistance might also be required at that point, because that becomes a compulsory process versus the voluntary process that we're trying to stress. We are hoping that communities and applicants will be engaged in a, you know, high level of dialogue before the application, because if it hits to the, if it happens after the application, it becomes a very contentious process, and it delays a lot of things on many people's ends. So, we're hopeful that it'll work. I'm probably going over a little bit, but one thing I will mention is that while we, sort of my other hat on working with state agencies, the commission is trying to determine how applicants work their way through state permits. In reality, it is not likely that state permitting will be completed to any substantial degree by the time that it reaches the commission's desk. And as you can imagine, there's, you know, substantial back and forth between the state agencies and developers of any major project of this size. So, in recognition that that permitting will not be complete, what the commission has done is it has established an agency advisory program for host and surrounding communities. So, at the time that a host community is ready to execute a host community agreement, or a surrounding community is about to execute a surrounding community agreement, folks should be in contact with me, and I will arrange for the state agencies to provide their best snapshot of what their thoughts are about this potential development at this point in time. And that will give you a good feel of, do they like, for example, a transportation plan? Do they not like a transportation plan? What are their thoughts about it? I do note that because the processes are the processes, it is likely that state agencies will, you know, have different thoughts as they go through the process, but this is designed to give everybody the benefit of the best snapshot in time at the current moment. Community mitigation funds, there's, obviously, there's been a lot of emphasis on the agreements, the surrounding community agreements and host community agreements, but the legislature in its wisdom dedicated substantial dollars to the community mitigation fund. And that fund, they're to be expended to assist the host community and the surrounding communities in offsetting costs related to construction and operation of a gaming establishment, including things such as water, sewer, education, transportation, infrastructure, housing, environmental issues, and public safety. A substantial amount of dollars will be put into that fund each year. It's 6.5% of the revenue from the Category One licensees. I don't have a figure for you right now, but as you've heard, we're talking in the hundreds of millions of dollars of how much funds the revenue, the revenue that'll be sent to the Commonwealth each year, it's anticipated, from all of the establishments, including the slots. Now, the revenues related solely to the Category One licenses, there's also a subset of the application fees that have to be submitted to the commission that also goes to the community mitigation fund. But there will be substantial funds available to communities to take a look at that fund. Now, as I mentioned, there are benefits to being a surrounding community, as in the community mitigation fund is designed to help surrounding communities and host communities with impacts that they may determine, define after the fact, after casino or slots facility is up and running. At some point, you may determine, hey, here's an impact that we didn't anticipate, or this wasn't anticipated at the time that we did our agreement, or perhaps there was no agreement, but this impact showed up at some later point. Communities can apply to the commission by February 1st of each year. The legislation establishes a process by which there's a community mitigation subcommittee that advises the commission on how funds should be made available, and that community mitigation subcommittee is comprised of local community mitigation committees that then advise that committee that advise us on how we should expend those dollars. And the local community mitigation committees is comprised of host and surrounding communities. One other thing I will mention in regard to that regulation that we put forward, we noted that just because a particular community does not achieve surrounding community status in the event that it petitions the commission, that does not necessarily mean that you would not be able to take advantage of the community mitigation fund, because the impacts will be felt by many different entities, not only host communities and surrounding communities, but communities within, you know, a nearby area. The commission pursuant to that definition, just because you don't pass the threshold test with the commission at this point, that does not mean that you would not be able to take advantage of the community mitigation fund at a future date. Lot of information, I know, the gaming commission website, I really would urge you to take a look at it. It's, we just put out a new website. We just put public notice of it out today. It's been up and running for a couple of days. I've only found a bunch of kinks in it, but probably not too much more, and I urge you to take a look at it, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, John. And before we open it up for questions, in, excuse me, in our packets that we got, the town of Plainville was gracious enough to offer us their traffic impact study, their RFP for gaming consultants, specific consultants to look at the gaming industry, and there's a PowerPoint presentation of the Plain Ridge Park in the packet, and I thank Plainville for doing that. At this point, Joe, if you wanted, Mr. Fernandez, if you wanted to come up?
Do we have to open our hearing at 8:30?
It's already open and continuing, right?
I'm sorry, no.
What's at 8:30?
Jake and Joe's.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Fernandez, one second. No, actually, no, this was, it's continued, so it was already opened, two hearings ago.
That's the one we continued from last Tuesday, right?
Chairman, if you want to take a five-minute changeover here, we could probably deal with this very quickly.
This is pretty, I think so.
The whole application?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would note that, under our usual process, whenever I go to any of these presentations, what our usual course of operation is, is that if, especially if there's an applicant within the room, the commission leaves before the applicants for, due to fairness reasons, as you can imagine. So, I'd be glad to take any questions now in advance of Plainville's.
Well, I don't, all due respect, I don't consider the town of Plainville an applicant here.
Understood, yeah, understood, absolutely.
Let's do this.
Yeah, sorry, maybe that makes sense.
Is there anyone from Jake and Joe's here?
Yes.
Oh, there is, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's just spend two minutes, we can get through this, and then we'll go back to that.
No problem.
Okay, so there's, yeah.
Not to.
Yeah, so there's a public hearing that was continued for the application for an alteration of premises for alcohol restaurant licenses at Jake and Joe's, located at 25 Foxborough Boulevard.
I don't need to read anything.
No, no.
What about the stockholder? What about the stockholder?
I mean, it's in the packet.
Is there a notice for the stockholder?
Here is the names of the stockholder, which should be in your packet.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, there's no legal, there's no separate legal notice for that, though?
Yeah, there was.
It's together, it's the premise and the new stockholder, it's all in one announcement, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you have the copy, I apologize if you don't, but it was done, I can tell you that. Look, not to steal John's thunder, but just to make this a lot simpler, is that all right, John?
Sure.
The applicant has not, the Nacera family has not actually done a remodeling opening process before. They've got a whole bunch of restaurants that are extremely well-regarded, police chiefs in those communities have all indicated they're incredibly responsible restaurateurs, oh, this is Nacera, and they did a wonderful job. What they didn't realize was, when they filed the floor plan with you, when you granted the original transfer, the floor plan was basically the one that had been in existence. They built something substantially different. That required them to come in sometime prior to wanting to have their opening and file a change of premises petition. They didn't know they needed to do that, and we only discovered it when the building inspector went down for a routine occupancy permit inspection with the plan, looked and said, whoop, big difference, we heard about it, Jim actually went down, I went down.
I don't want to expedite it, but we've been through this at the last hearing, so everyone on the board. everyone on the board understands that, right?
Bottom line was, while we were getting the paperwork processed to do the change of premises hearing, we discovered that we also had a new participant in the funding, which had been a partner who had initially declined, but then during the process decided that they did want to come in, family said, great, people with whom they've had a long-term relationship. So, both needed to get refiled, both required notifications and all that. So, last week, you postponed the change of premises to tonight, so you could do both. Everything is in order, outstanding businesses. John, I did probably steal your thunder, but I hope I made this a lot simpler.
I tried to make things simple, Kevin, you know. That's, I think that's, in a nutshell, what happened. I think, as Mark knows, once people start to remodel things, you make one change, all of a sudden, it's a vicious chain reaction, and I think that that's what happened here. And again, the change of ownership is with an equity partner, who is also an equity partner in two other of their facilities, including Jake and Joe's in Norwood. So, he's a, it's a solid financial, it's better than, they feel it was better than borrowing the money from Citizens Bank and pledging the license that way. It's a much simpler and cleaner way to do it, that's all.
And I will further report to the board tonight, Sandy and I can report this too with absolute assurance. Attorney Mitch Lamore is probably the most thorough counsel for filling this stuff out. And he really dug into this quickly and got it all done. We've gone through it anyways, but frankly, if every attorney did it like this, we'd have a lot less problems. This has really been very thoroughly done and it's in perfect order.
So, Attorney Mitch Lamore, thank you for all your hard work. Cut to the chase, we've been invited, if you've gone over there, you've seen the premises, we've seen the plans, you've seen the application and the paperwork that's been fixed, any questions on it?
Mr. Chairman, aren't you supposed to recuse yourself from this hearing?
Yeah, I'm doing work for the landowner, I've been recusing myself from every hearing, but I'm trying to expedite this, so I will recuse myself and finish it.
I will totally expedite it. Do you want anything else to add?
No, I don't have anything.
Kevin, anything else to add?
No, sir.
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion. Well, it's a public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Well, is anybody from the audience who should be heard on this matter? Seeing none, take a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Any other discussion?
My only discussion would be, did the chief go down and see the new area and is he comfortable with it because I didn't see anything in here.
I don't know that the chief had the opportunity to do that yet or not, but I will tell you, I've.
He's in the back.
Oh, he's here, okay. You had a chance to look at the new place?
No, I have not, sir. So, I can make a point of going down while it's still under construction, and I don't perceive that there would be any problems with the operation based on what my observations of the Norwood facility were.
Okay. This is pretty similar to the.
I will tell you, I have been down there, the building inspector's been down there. It is an opportunity when they have the opening go down because they've done an absolutely stunning job with.
Well, they can't open until we make this motion, so. I move that we approve the application for an alteration of premises for the all alcohol restaurant license at Jake and Joe's located at 25 Foxborough Boulevard. Set for that one.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
401, sustaining.
And I move that we approve the application for approval of the new stockholders for Jake and Joe's Restaurant.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
401, sustaining.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, can't wait.
And when do you plan on opening? Is there a date?
Just have to go through the, you have to send the license, the ABCC, and as soon as we get it back from ABCC, we need probably five, six days to just to get the crew, the staff back together that we've hired and get a little bit more training done, so roughly five or six days after we get it back from the state.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thanks, John.
And just, let me step back a little bit. I had asked Mr. Fernandez, who's the Town, Plainville Town Administrator, to come for the benefit of Foxborough to help us understand where they're at, and maybe we could ask some questions. I think it's beneficial for everyone to be on the same page, especially with these expedited timelines, and I noticed in the paper today, Plainville's looking, already setting a date potentially for voting and straw polls and stuff, so I think rather than waiting till the last minute, if everyone's on the page, early. So, Mr. Fernandez, would you want to just kind of give us an overview of where you are and a little bit about your RFP process?
We need you on, I'm sorry, live TV.
On a technical basis, we're really not anywhere, and let me explain that. We put out an RFP, I think it's a fairly comprehensive request for proposal for a gaming consultant. Those were due January 31st. I gave them to an evaluation team primarily consisting of department heads who may or may not be impacted by the presence of a gaming facility. They did their evaluations, we tabulated them Monday and literally last night, came to a ranking. We have tentatively selected someone, I will tell you, not that it's germane to your consideration, but there were some good and very strong proposals. This one was the best. The cost, however, was twice, is going to be more than twice of the next most competitive proposal, but we're still going ahead with it because we think and want a thorough analysis of certainly what this is going to do for or to Plainville. I can get into a little bit of the detail of the RFP that may be of interest to you, but telling you where we're going from this point, obviously engaging the consultant, I've scheduled, and this is perhaps even news to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I scheduled a selectmen's meeting for the sole purpose of interviewing and hopefully engaging the consultant, that's March 5th, 6:30 PM at the Wood School. I expect there to be some public, both interest and participation. We are in the process of doing some due diligence in advance, checking with supplied references and looking at some of the work they've done and seeing whether in fact the recipients of that work are satisfied with the work that was in fact done. Again, the consultant is coupled with at least five other folks. One of the concerns I had was that, you know, this is somewhat unique, it's pretty comprehensive in terms of what the impact of something like this is. So, there are issues with traffic, there are social issues, there are financial issues, and clearly there are gaming issues. So, we anticipated and allowed for a combined proposal with either a combined bid or a subcontract bid, and that's what we're going to see in this case. Then, the real question is working backwards, and if I could just, only because, as you can imagine, I'm a little sensitive and a little concerned that people get the wrong impression. Two things that have been said tonight, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned something in your packet about a traffic analysis that's been done by Plainville. Plainville has done nothing. What you may have would be a traffic study by the applicant.
Correct, correct.
So, we have done nothing with the way we're approaching traffic. I'm no engineer, but my understanding is that typically 100,000 square feet of retail space is proposed, a traffic engineer goes to the manual and knows that that's going to generate X number of trips, and then they figure out what the impact and how to mitigate that. As far as I know, there's no such manual, certainly in Massachusetts, for traffic generation to study impacts on, so we have purposely divided the traffic piece in two. This gaming consultant will be charged with determining what the numbers of customers will be on a daily, hourly basis, where they're likely to come from, and then turn that information over to the traffic engineer so he or she can look at intersections that may or may not be impacted, road capabilities and the like. So, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, we're not giving people the wrong impression and something else was said that I now have forgotten, so I'll hopefully get back to that. Working back, oh, that was the timeline. Again, the timeline that I think you made reference to in the packet is something that was put together by Plainridge in terms of analyzing the act. I don't disagree with it, but I think the operative date is in fact when the Gaming Commission will schedule a decision on the Class II license, and then we need to work backwards in Plainville to make sure we're prepared for having done our homework so that, you know, the process can go forward at the Gaming Commission.
I just missed you one thing on that. A couple of weeks ago, the commission put forward a sort of an aspirational deadline that it's been taking a look at evaluating whether or not it could meet that deadline. I'm not certain that it would be able to meet that deadline, and that's part of the conversation that we'll have on Thursday. But again, we're very cognizant that everybody needs to know what these deadlines are as soon as possible, and we're trying to do that.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want more information, I can talk a little bit about what the anticipated scope of work is for the consultant, how that may, and I think will, impact your consideration. So, again, I'll leave it to you, I can blabber all night or I can.
Yeah, if you're comfortable sharing that, I think it's beneficial.
Yeah, just a summary, the scope of services requires that the proposer reviews the act and make sure they know what it is that's required in the act and any resulting regulations. Review of existing gaming studies and research within the legislation itself, and I don't know where the Gaming Commission is, but the legislators, legislators realize that there's kind of a lack of solid science in terms of what gaming does to, be it a state, a community, or a country. So, they recognize that there needs to be more work on that, cited a Canadian study of over 400 studies, and the Gaming Commission was in the process of hiring a consultant to do nothing but analysis of existing studies and then take it pursuant to the legislative mandate to the next level to see what, if other, impacts there may be. We've required our consultant to review existing gaming studies, and this particular consultant has committed to reviewing the top 50 studies and seeing if there are any parallels potentially to the Plainville or the surrounding communities. Market trends in the gaming industry, is this a dying industry, is it a growing industry? How's it going to be impacted by competition in nearby states and the potential for additional competition, both obviously within Massachusetts and beyond Massachusetts? Clearly, analysis of the applicants submitted to the Gaming Commission, including financials and pro forma, traffic generation analysis, as I talked about earlier, predictable demands on public services and infrastructure, predictable demands on local citizens, predictable impacts on regional economy, which obviously you would be interested in. I chose the word predictable because there's a lot of, I want to call it speculation, but people have taken positions on both sides of the gaming fence and say things with authority. I was hoping that as a result of this endeavor, that we'd have a little more concrete evidence for whatever conclusions people, or in this case, the consultant reaches. Negotiation of a host community agreement and then wrap-up, wrap-up being making sure that we've, we're on schedule with the Gaming Commission's timetable, making sure that this has a one-year runout so that should in fact there be slots at Plainridge, we want the consultant to, on a periodic basis throughout the first year operations, make sure that there's compliance with both the promises and commitments in the host community agreement. So, the extent that, the two phases that I think may be important, when I talk about predictable impacts on local citizenry, I've given as examples, local property values, both residential and commercial, and the geographic range of any impact, you know, is there an impact next door, within a quarter mile, half mile, five mile radius? Crime rates, again, based on having expanded gaming in a community, incidences of DUI as a result of contemplated alcohol service policy as envisioned under the act. You may know that there's a provision for providing free drinks, and how is that going to impact DUI and other things, affect on local rates of gambler bankruptcy, mortgage default, suicides, domestic violence, and other social costs directly related to proximity of a gaming facility. I can tell you, the proposal is very strong and has some faculty members from a number of schools to look at that very topic, propensity of gambling addiction as young people mature to adulthood in close proximity. We all know that if someone wants to spend money on gaming, there are opportunities, but is that opportunity enhanced by the proximity of it, and are we going to, particularly in the immediate region, going to suffer any type of adverse impact because people are more tempted as they grow up in close proximity to a gaming facility? Proximity of, excuse me, impacts on other town businesses, impacts on commercial, residential, and auto insurance rates, impact on housing needs, impact on local seniors, particularly as a result of potential marketing efforts of a gaming facility targeted to that population. Community image issues, noise and light issues, other issues. And here's the piece, predictable impacts on regional economy. Similarly above tasks, this tax task is aimed at identifying the regional economic costs and benefits associated with hosting an expanded gaming facility. In addition, reviewing the analysis to be contained within the anticipated Plainridge application, the selective vendor will be capable of examining the regional economy in terms of unemployment, tourism, transportation, housing, marketing, planning, and more to predict the impacts of expanded gaming. Additionally, the selective vendor will define those surrounding communities as envisioned both under the act and subsequent regulations and policy generated by the Mass Gaming Commission. I'd be a bit disingenuous if I didn't explain why I wanted to see that in there, and, Mr. Chairman, you and I have a brief conversation on that. I want to know that in fact, if there are impacts, how far they extend, if in fact there are no impacts, I want to know that as well. And I think one of the concerns I have is that if there is impact, I think any community of Plainville and beyond deserves to talk to the proponent and, or the applicant, rather, and seek out mitigation to those impacts. If there are no impacts, I'm fearful that people, and I'm not suggesting that that's the motive here, but I'm fearful that people will seize on an opportunity to gain something that they otherwise might not have the opportunity to do in generally other circumstances. The thing that was useful for me, because I'm not an engineer, someone tells me 10 traffic trips per day or 100 traffic trips per day, I have no idea what that means. So, although this is Plainridge's, I will only cite the ones that I personally verified based on their original environmental impact report. And to put it in perspective, and this is clearly a number that needs to be verified by our consultant, but Plainridge is estimating 6,534 trips per day. Currently, they do about 1,600, there are anticipated additional 4,900. I'm not here to say that's an accurate number or not, I don't know. But if in fact, just let's, for argument's sake, say that it isn't an accurate number, the lows across the street, excuse me, down the street, is 7,856. Plainville Crossing, which is across the street that has Home Goods Stop and Shop, Panera Bread and the like, that's 15, excuse me, that's 17,610. So, again, I think it's important before people get particularly concerned with what the impact is going to be, at least as it pertains to traffic, that it's placed in perspective. Just an editorial comment, my view of what the legislation anticipated as it applies to a category two, it's, category two is somewhat the orphaned son of the legislation. I think the real focus that, and it's a pretty lengthy bill, but the real focus of what the Gaming Commission is charged with is the impact of casinos. I know it's somewhat self-serving because I'm, you know, potentially going to host, or our community's going to host a. or our community's going to host a Category Two slot license, but I think in terms of impact, I think the legislation was envisioning a much larger impact with a casino, but again, time will tell, that's why we've hired a consultant. The process, probably the most important piece, the process also anticipates, not anticipates, requires a four-meeting process. A kickoff meeting that basically allows people to say, hey, we're concerned about this, we're concerned about that. Should it be in the scope of services? And then based on whether it's already included or not, we have the right to say to the consultant, hey, we didn't think about that, include that in the proposal, in the work. There are a, I just want to make sure I get them titled correctly. Of course, I'm not going to. There is a pre-negotiation meeting that once the consultant, excuse me, there's a meeting that once the consultant has done their work, that they report to the community in terms of, these are the anticipated impacts that we found. There is then a follow-up meeting, pre-negotiation meeting, that talks about this is what we are anticipating to be contained within the host community agreement. And then lastly, if and when a host community agreement is drafted, that meeting will also, that process will also envision explaining to the citizenry of Plainville who will be voting on this, what's contained in the host community agreement. And at that point, if in fact the host community agreement is drafted, it will be predicated on the fact that the Board of Selectmen have deemed a facility and a host community agreement to be beneficial to the town, so the consultant will now take on a, for lack of a better word, a salesman's posture, that he or she will attempt to say, these are the benefits we foresee, these are the impacts that will be anticipated, and these are the things that we've negotiated into the agreement to mitigate those. So there'll obviously be public meetings at any point in this process, any, either member of your board or any of your citizens. I mean, this is after all a public process, and I have spoken to some folks from Foxborough, and this is all open record at this point, so.
Great. Thank you, Joe. And let's say thank you for your, obviously your time, but your candidness in forthcoming with this, and we've had discussions in the past. And I think what Joe said to me is, he kind of alluded, Joe is a town administrator and the selectman, they're looking at the best interest of Plainville, and I'm sure you'll do that. That RFP, Mark and I sat through your planning board, they had, there's a separate effort with the local traffic, so, and I'm sure you'll do well for Plainville with, it sounds like you're in front of it. Our obligation obviously is to Foxborough and our residents. We're in the midst of this, residents that have come to us, they want to be on a committee with some council representation as well. If and when that comes to fruition, we move forward to try to understand your studies and maybe do on our own and work with the Gaming Commission. Would you be that contact person over in Plainville that we would reach out to, or would we go right to the applicant, in your opinion?
In terms of, I'm certainly not empowered, as John described, I'm certainly not empowered to say to you that you qualify as a surrounding community. That's a, an agreement that has to be...
With the applicant.
...gained by the applicant. In the process, anyone who, as I said, anyone who needs information that we've gathered, and even at the outset, if there's something that the RFP doesn't envision being addressed, you know, invite you again to that kickoff meeting, I invite you to pick up the phone and chat with me. Obviously Kevin and I have had a longstanding relationship. I want to make sure that, you know, whatever the outcome of this is, it's, one of the things I can assure you, it's not going to be that we, or I, or anyone that we brought into this process is stonewalling anyone in terms of information. Decisions are going to be made that are based on that information. You know, obviously we each have our own particular interests. My hope is that we don't anywhere in this process cross swords with one another. I just, again, I need to repeat that I would ask you to look at this, and within the draft regulations, the Gaming Commission has come up with in terms of surrounding communities, one of the codicils is that in order to qualify as a surrounding community, the impacts on you or a community, you need to be unique, or not unique is my word, but different than that experienced by any other community. Obviously geographically, we have three other communities, one not being in Massachusetts. Again, I think the litmus test is how is it that we're, or this proposal is impacting you that is different than might be impacting Mansfield, North Attleboro, or across the border in Cumberland?
Fair enough, appreciate that. We can open up to the board, but there may be some residents, and it's probably unfair, and I don't think it's warranted for you to answer questions from residents, but can you stick around and answer some questions?
Yeah, I mean, to the extent that anyone has a question about Plainville, obviously that's the only subject area that I'm capable of speaking to.
Okay, so we'll open up to, if it's okay with the board, anyone in the audience that had any, has any questions or concerns while these people are here?
Well, I'll take a couple of shots.
The only thing if I ask you, you have to come up to the mic and introduce yourself for the record, please.
Dan Crivolaro, 6 Spruce Street.
In Foxborough?
Foxborough. My understanding is the surrounding community agreement is renewable annually, you said, in February?
John?
No, actually, that is what I was referencing, every February, that is the Community Mitigation Fund, which is, it's a separate creature from the agreement. So you could have both an agreement, and then communities could apply to the Community Mitigation Fund. The Community Mitigation Fund is populated by gaming revenues, that's basically after the casinos are up, and casinos and slot facilities are up and running.
And number two would be, is there any ramifications for an applicant if they do not enter into a surrounding community agreement?
Yeah, every applicant will be evaluated on how significant their outreach program has been to communities, and to the degree that if it's determined that it was deficient by the Commission, that those are points against it in the competition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Tracy Longa, 34 Barton Road. I actually just have a quick question for Joe. I'm just curious why you're concerned about the surrounding communities maybe trying to benefit from this a little more than they should when the funds come from the mitigation fund. It shouldn't really affect Plainville. I'm just curious why that's a concern of yours.
Well, unless I'm confusing the use of the mitigation fund, under the legislation, there is in fact, from the revenues that the state garners, a mitigation fund devoted to community mitigation. And I, for one, have no issue with that. You know, whoever needs to make a case, and can make a case with the State Gaming Commission, again, is frankly not a concern of mine. My concern, and I'll be candid, is that we will be negotiating, should it come to pass, that it seems to make sense to host a slot license in Plainville, we'll be negotiating a host community agreement. And this should, and I know it comes as no surprise to the applicant, we're going to look at making sure that we cover our costs if in fact there's identified impacts, be it public safety, the whole host of things that I talked about, but beyond that, this is our shining opportunity. It's been something that has been not so much anticipated, but possible for the last 16 years that Plainridge has been there. So that we are going to attempt to negotiate an agreement that maximizes benefit, economic benefit to the town, above and beyond any mitigation. Like anything else, funds are finite, whether it's the private sector or public sector. And if a community is, as a surrounding community, is looking for funds beyond those that are needed to mitigate a defined impact, then that's coming out of, if you will, the pocket of the town of Plainville, and that's a concern for me.
Which leads me to a question for you. I know there's a mitigation fund, is there a certain allotted for each casino and the slot house, or is it a large fund that is distributed between all of them?
Yeah, because that will inevitably be developed after the, the details will be developed after the casinos are open, casinos and slot facilities are up around, and we haven't come to any determinations in how things would be allotted per different region, but that's, that's part of what the Commission will have to determine over time.
So right now, the funds that are put in by Plainville don't necessarily all, Plainridge, sorry, don't necessarily all go just to that as with the other casinos? All the mitigation funds they put in right now, it's not strictly just for that area? It actually, if that area doesn't need as much, some of those funds can go over to another area that may need the funds?
Yeah, the Commission hasn't made the determinations in how it would split up that Community Mitigation Fund. And, you know, perhaps some of my remarks earlier were confusing, and you understand it, but the Community Mitigation Fund and the community agreements are obviously separate and distinct things. The community agreements are executed now, and then the Community Mitigation Fund, once its, once its details are developed with the advice of the subcommittees and advisory committees and local community advisory committees, which could, you know, very much put in some of those type of recommendations on how to split up the fund, that is available later after revenues start coming into the domino.
Okay, I guess that actually confuses me a little bit, sorry. So when you create a host community agreement and there are funds agreed to, that doesn't come out of the mitigation fund? I mean, I know the taxes and things like that, but if they come to a traffic agreement or the impact on traffic or road construction and they have X amount of dollars they need, that is from the developer, separate from the mitigation fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so mitigation agreements that are agreed to, to evaluate impacts, those are based on funds that would be available from the applicant or measures that the applicant determines are necessary to mitigate those actual impacts. And then separately and distinctly, there's a Community Mitigation Fund that is populated with dollars that, from the revenues of the facilities whereby that, those funds are available for communities that apply, separate and distinct from the agreements.
Okay, so if they have to reconstruct the highway right there, the money used for that would come from, directly from the developer in the community, host community agreement?
It is, it is up to the applicant and the communities to determine what those impacts would be and how they would be addressed.
Right, okay.
And that's part of the application process. To the degree that that particular impact is not fully addressed in impact agreements, it could be addressed at a later point through the Community Mitigation Fund.
Okay.
But again, that is upon application to the Commission, so not, it's not a guarantee that everything would be mitigated at that point. It's pursuant to an application process where the Commission evaluates a number of different needs that it tries to meet.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Good questions. Anyone else from the audience? Anyone from the board?
Just time.
Okay. Great, again, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and John, and there's two, are you a selectman also?
I am not.
No, okay. But thank you for coming. I know your time is probably dedicated to Plainville, so come to an abutting community, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see another copy.
Sure.
More information.
Okay, storm through this, Kevin's little small storm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks.
I feel like taking a break, you want to just keep going?
Let's go.
All right. Public, okay, we had asked Kevin to, following the Nemo 2013 storm, just to give us an update. And in our packet, there was kind of a summary of some of the good things and some of the lessons learned. Kevin, you want to go over that?
Sure. A couple of quick points. First, that generally, I think, as the board is aware, the preparations that were made were excellent. I won't go into all the details, but it was extensive planning prior to the storm, and it worked out very well. We did not have a single down wire, while in all candor, the bulk of that is due to the weather. We got lucky, we were right on the line where it could have gone either way. Right south of us, towns were losing power, so we were very fortunate. But I also don't want to minimize all the work that took place this past year with tree clearing and the so-called double feed to the community. Those things prepared us very well, and I think we may well have expected a few isolated downwires, and we didn't have even that, and that's probably not just due to the weather, but that's due to the preparation as well. Big burden fell on the DPW crews, fire and police didn't have too many calls at all. Most of the work was on DPW crews, and they did a fantastic job. I will tell you, they were out there in conditions that were unimaginable, really dangerous, and they worked all through the night. The driving band was very helpful. Couple of lessons learned, lessons learned. We made a lot of strides with media communication, still getting it down, but did a lot of work this time with media communication, and the outreach to the community was, was really very substantially improved. We used TV, print media, internet, texting, we used all the assets available to us. The media was very cooperative with us, they did a fantastic job, and we really get the message out. Reverse 911 extensively was as well. Conference calling was something new we tried, and worked great. You folks ran on some of those conference calls and worked really well. There's a whole bunch of things I put in the report for you about the, about the shelter, a lot of refinements we need to do, we need to get a generator down at Seaway because we can have a small shelter there, we need to get Borrell School overhead, exhaust fans on a generator, we need to get some more cots, a lot of small things we need to do to get that better. But generally speaking, those are all in the category of refinements and enhancements as we go forward. So by and large, a very successful effort, and Foxborough is really getting to be a community that has an outstanding reputation for disaster preparation and for conduct of emergency preparedness. We are really getting lots of calls from other communities implying how we do it, because we've now gone through four of them in a year and a half. And thank goodness, they're getting a little less intense for us now, so that's my report.
Any questions from the board?
We all lived it.
Great job.
That's good. Quick question on that, you had $210,000 spent in 48 hours, and 226 in '72, and you're saying 75% would be reimbursed?
That includes, by the way, that's the FEMA MEMA formula that includes rental of equipment and things like that. The actual cash outlay was about $150,000 for storm clearing. That's actual cash out of the budget. The higher number is what MEMA and FEMA allows, that includes, for instance, rental of our trucks and things like that. So if you do the math, what you're going to find is that we're going to get back at a 75% reimbursement rate about what we actually were out of pocket. Doesn't cover depreciation on vehicles, covers our actual out-of-pocket. So that'll be good news if we get the paperwork in, the disaster declaration gets approved, and we get the checks probably six months from now, roughly.
Got you, okay. Good. And again, not to say it but all the volunteers and the people that worked on it. I know Kevin, you were on vacation and you came back for this, and I appreciate that.
My wife liked it a lot, thanks. But I'll tell her you said that, that'll help. Thanks for saying.
Yep, okay. Actually, only 15 minutes off schedule. Personnel wage bylaw change, that was an item that Selectman Capola brought up, and do you want to talk about that, or is this a group discussion you want to have?
Sure. Yeah. I'll say? Can we all say?
Sure.
Oh, okay. All right. The reason I brought this up was I've been attending the advisory committee meetings every Wednesday, and especially when they were discussing the budget. And at one, as they were going through the budget line by line, there was one request for tuition reimbursement for $9,975, and this was under the personal wage bylaw for a new employee. a new employee. And I questioned the appropriateness of this, since this tuition is neither for courses required by the town for continuing employment, nor is this degree a requirement for, for employment. In my mind, it was used for resume enhancement. I was told to read the consolidated personnel bylaw FY 2013, Article 2, Section 0, Tuition Reimbursement, and under this section, there are no conditions as a probation period of employment, a cap on reimbursement, or a requirement to remain an employee of the town once the degree is earned. I was told that the employee read the bylaw, decided to take advantage of it, and requested tuition reimbursement for a master's program. I thought that almost $10,000 in tuition reimbursement for courses not required by the town for hiring, or for this person to continue their employment, was excessive. I asked that the bylaw be revised with the warrant article at the annual town meeting, and it was mentioned that there were to be revisions to the personal wage bylaw. Chairman of the Personal Wage Bylaw Committee, Gary Whitehouse, spoke to the employee in regard to rewriting the law, the bylaw. The HR director agreed, and, and also the request was pulled. I'm just concerned that the, that this tuition request was very excessive. It's a tuition reimbursement that normally is, is not as far, according to you, only one other time tuition has been, tuition reimbursement has been granted. My big problem is, is, in my mind, tuition reimbursement should be for, if the town is requiring an employee to, in order to do their job, to take a few extra courses, or for recertification or something. And in this case, I don't believe that was the case, as this person was hired, the amount of educa- the level of education was known when she was hired, and all this, to me, this master's program is just a padding of, of a resume. And so, I was very happy to see that the request was pulled, but I'm just concerned that we don't have, the personal wage bylaw does not have any conditions set upon it in regard to tuition reimbursement. And I was under the impression that this was going to be taken care of at the annual town meeting, but apparently, because there would be so much involved in this, that it wouldn't be ready for, for this town, this town meeting. It would have to be done at another town meeting. I just think it should be revised, and that was my concern, so.
We can do board discussion, but do you, do you have a response to that, or do you want us to just?
Just to let the board know, so that there's no misconceptions here, the non-union personnel bylaw is essentially the document that lays out the benefits for non-union personnel. It's, the, the unionized employees have their collective bargaining agreement, and this is the non-union counterpart to those collective bargaining agreements. The provision that Ginny is mentioning has been in there for at least 20 years. We went back and researched back as far as we could, and we couldn't find when it was actually put in. We think it was in the original package, which has been in there since the 80s or something like that, it's been around a long time. It has only rarely been accessed by employees, but it has been accessed more than twice over the years. It is a right of the employee, it is not a discretionary act on the part of the town. I only have two decisions to make. One, is it a job-related degree? And two, was it requested timely? Meaning, was it requested by December 31st of the year, of the fiscal year preceding when it will be used? If those two conditions are met, then I must grant it, it is not a discretionary act. It is a right of the employee, and it's not a, it's not a request, it's more in the way of a directive from the employee. I am taking this, I'm notifying you, is this approved, and those two, the two conditions? So I just wanted the board to understand that it's not a matter of my approving it or disapproving it, if the employee request that meets the guidelines, it's approved. In the union contracts, these kinds of benefits are very common. The union contracts are rich with educational benefits that are vastly in excess of the monies that were requested in this case. Those have all been negotiated over the years and are a feature of those union bargaining contracts, so while this amount seemed high, it's because graduate courses are expensive these days, and I believe this, I believe this request was for two or three courses. They're, they're a lot of money, grad school. So, that's all I can report to you. I don't have any objection, nor do I disagree with Ginny's ideas, and I think Gary has some ideas as well, and I've talked to our HR director Cindy about it, concerning some modifications to the bylaw to make it, to put some controls on it, because, you know, frankly, it's a, it's a, it's a right, it's not a privilege, it's a right. So if 10 employees made this request, we could be paying out $100,000. And frankly, I don't know why this hasn't been more widely used over the years, but we've got, we've got two people using it right now, and I think one last year. So I think we probably want to put some modifications on it. However, as I have cautioned, this document is to the non-union employees what a collective bargaining agreement is to the unionized employees. I would urge the board caution in terms of taking away benefits or modifying them without engaging in a respectful conversation with the people that it covers. Reason being, I have in fact seen one instance of actual formation of a union, which occurred specifically because a town took non-union employee bylaw rights away, and the result was the formation of two unions, a middle-management one and an upper-management one. And I saw another attempt, which got derailed by some intervention, and we were able to head it off. Now, I'm not saying the employees here will do that, I am saying that if we take things away from them that they've had for a long time without a respectful conversation, I believe we're making a mistake. And so, my suggestion to the board is, if it's the will of the board, if a majority of you feel that modifications are merited here, and again, I certainly agree, then my suggestion is that we, you give me some ideas, what you've got in mind, and then I want to work with the Wage and Personnel Board, and with the HR Director, and with a group of non-union employees to kind of talk about this, and there may be other changes in that bylaw that would be good to make, too. The two that are on the warrant for this year are just procedural, the language changes because the EEO provision and the FMLA provision are both out of date, and they have to be modernized, because they're not lawful provisions anymore. But we didn't change any benefits or anything. Frankly, I had some ideas, and I was very nicely and very tactfully by some non-union employees, asked to back off until I'd had a chance to have a dialogue with them, and I said, absolutely, no problem, so.
Okay. Lorraine, you have a question?
I had read through the bylaw, and it seems like the whole thing needs revision, because it was created before we had a human resources director, and so there are places where it references the town manager when it's probably in the director's role now.
The bylaw's been around 20 or 30 years. The Manager Act has been around, I think, seven or eight.
Right.
So the bylaw is very inconsistent and needs a lot of work.
Right.
And we actually, the HR director and I actually separately, because we wanted to concur, did that work, identified all the changes, and then I said, okay, this can't go forward until we've had, again, a respectful dialogue with the Wage and Personnel Board, but you're quite right, it, it's in need of major revisions, no doubt about it.
And, you know, I think, just, you know, as an example, this one particular issue just shows how outdated it is, because when you look out at industry, what industries offer for tuition reimbursement, you know, certainly there are caps and minimum employment, you know, length of time as an employee before you have access to that, so, you know, I think it'll make a lot of sense to have that kind of discussion, and do you think it's something that could be completed by the fall town meeting?
Oh sure, I don't, I don't see that as an impediment, I think it's, I think it's something you have a conversation about tonight on this one, because this, this one has come up, and you should chat about it, whether you conclude it tonight, or you do it another night, it's up to you, but I'd like to get the board's feedback on that. And then, there's some other issues in there that I think need some attention as well, which have nothing to do with inconsistencies between the bylaw and the, and the Manager Act. There are benefit things that, you know, as we're working with the union employees to make some changes, I think we need to contemporize the non-union benefits as well, but again, it needs, as with the unions, it's done in a very respectful negotiated way, I think was wise to follow the same format. And I think you'll find the non-union employees to be very willing partners, you know, to reasonable changes, I think they're very willing to do that.
You know, Kevin, what, what really bothered me about this was, it was the newly hired HR person who requested this $9,975 tuition reimbursement, because it was noted that there were no restrictions in the personal wage bylaw. I would think, myself, that if I were an HR person, reading the personal wage bylaw, I would have said, when I got to Section O, oh, there are no restrictions on this, this, this has to be fixed, rather than saying, you know what, I'm going to get myself a degree for $10,000. And that's, and, and, and also, you approved it. I just, I, you know, I-
Mr. Chairman? I would respectfully suggest that we not talk about it an individual employee. This is, you know, if, if a board member wants to be critical of a town employee, you have every right to do so, but not at this meeting, and not in this manner. This is entirely inappropriate, and it's a violation of the employee's rights. This is wrong, and it needs a stop right now.
Understood, it's, it's new territory, and, and let's, let's pass that, and I apologize if this offended or put in a bad light one employee. Let me just, I haven't read it entirely, but you're saying there's no cap on this benefit?
There's no cap, it just is, you need a C grade, maintain a C grade. It has to be approved by the supervisor, it has to be requested before December 1st or December 31st, something like that.
December 31st of the year preceding.
So if it's 20,000, or 30,000, or 1,000, it's, it's, it's just reimbursement, there's no ceiling on it?
There's nothing.
Or a number of employees?
There's absolutely nothing.
Is there a requirement that if you get the benefit of this degree or these classes, you have to stay for?
No.
A certain amount of time?
There's no cap on that, there's no, there's no requirement that you have to stay in, in the town employ for a certain number of time, there's no cap on the reimbursement, and there's no requirement that you have been an employee for any amount of time, there's no probationary period. You have to have a, there's a probationary period when you get vacation time, sick leave, and personal time off.
And you're saying there's no subjectivity to it? If somebody asks you, as the town manager, if they can take this benefit as long as it's before December 31st, and it relates to their job?
As long as it's job-related, and the request comes in by December 31st, preceding the July 1st fiscal year where they want to take advantage of it.
Correct.
But there's no requirement that it actually depends on your job, as you, if you're hired, you're hired with the idea you have to get this degree, or in order to keep your job at, at your own level, you have to get a degree? I mean-
The only stipulations that have been stated are the ones you stated, there, you can ask these questions, Ginny, there aren't any answers right now. It needs to be brought up in open dialogue, like Kevin said, and I see Gary shaking his head up and down, yeah. That's the discussion that needs to be had. It, it is a little bit the wrong time right now to be having, asking questions more and more, why isn't this, why isn't that? Because you, he just stipulated, there's only two or three things that are attached to it, to it, that he has to grant it. So we can beat this to a, you know, to a check tonight, or we can just, I think you're right, it's something you found, it needs to be changed, and Kevin, I understand the union situations, but I've never seen anything that large in my life, in, in any kind of compensation for any union contract in my eight years here, seven years, whatever. So, they also have top caps on them in the union contracts. This one-
No, they do not. We, we have-
Yes, I have seen that they do, and I'm not going to get, I'm going to say, this is a little out of control. It needs to be addressed, needs to be fixed. It's not anybody's fault, it's something that has not been take, it's not been controlled, now it needs to be controlled. And I think we should all end this discussion right now and move forward.
One last point, and I appreciate that. It seems like every time we go in a direction of a non-union issue, we get reminded that be careful, because they can unionize. We're savvy enough, we've sat through labor negotiations as much as, you know, Selectman can do, I don't want to keep hearing that it's a takeaway, be careful, because they can unionize. You know, you get a little more respect to the board, a little more respect to the people at Town Hall, if this is going to tip the cart, and we're going to be dealing with unions, I, I just don't want to keep hearing it, but we understand it. You know, and I agree with Mark, I mean, I'm hearing this for the first time, that it is a very advantageous benefit that wasn't taken advantage, or wasn't exercised before. It's been around for a long time, it's come to light, we'll address it. I don't want to do it to the detriment of one employee that kind of took, took the benefit that is, she's entitled to, or he or she's entitled to. But as, as this panel said, we went through a transition with the Strong Town Manager, the Personnel Board, all that stuff, there's issues in our regulations, and this is one of them, so, I mean, it'd be great if we can get this handled for the May, if we can put it, I thought it was going to be in this article, if not, maybe in the fall, but now that it's, the cat's out of the bag, there may be more people that want to take advantage before the window gets closed, or the door gets closed.
December 31st is a little ways away, so I think we're in a safe position right now.
Yeah, any, anyone else who is desirous of using this benefit, the window is now closed for, we have, I have two requests in, both were approved.
Oh, December 30th, 2012, for the duration of 2013?
So, so the window is now closed until June 30th, 2014. Now, somebody could request it this year for July 1, 2014 to 15, that would be appropriate, but that's, that's one breaking mechanism that was put in it, for the specific purpose of allowing you to appropriate the money well for the year in which you're going to have to do it, so. And by the way, again, we only know of two people that have taken advantage of this recently. We don't have records without doing a lot of work, and I don't think it would be justified. There may have been many, many other people who took care, took advantage of it over the years. Again, this bylaw's been around for well over 20 years, and I'm pretty sure that other people probably took advantage of it, but because of inflation, depending what school you go to, college courses are very expensive, particularly graduate schools, and that's the reality.
All right, let's move on.
So is it the, just to get some direction from the board, how do we get this process to look at not only this issue, but other issues that are in, in flux or needing of repair? Is that something that's ongoing right now?
Within the personal wage bylaw? I think is something that you're committed to-
From the point of view of inconsistencies between the bylaw and the Manager Act, that's something we have to do, because Labor Council has been, it's been creating a lot of problems, and frankly, we've been spending a lot of money on Labor Council to resolve those problems. When an employee exercises, or an attorney representing an employee exercises a purported right in the bylaw, and then Council says, no, you can't, and then there's a dispute about, well, can you can't, and so it's getting kind of expensive, we need to get this resolved. In terms of benefit changes, be they increases or reductions, we did a review two years ago, brought a package to the board, the board approved it, it went to town meeting, and town meeting unanimously endorsed it. We haven't done a review since. I wasn't planning to do a review, because two years is kind of a quick timeframe, but I'm happy to do that if the board would like. Now, again, I do that in cooperation with the Wage and Personnel Board, HR Director, and probably a small group of non-union employees, but I don't know if that's what you have in mind, you've got to give me some direction, which you-
Well, I was going to say, other than this issue, I'm not, I don't navigate through the personnel wage books, and, and so I don't know if this is the tip of the iceberg, or this is the, an anomaly and the only thing, I don't know.
You know, from when I read through it, it just looks like the whole thing needs revision, so it really is a huge process that has to happen, and it's not a short- so it really is a huge process that has to happen, and it's not a short document, and it's so intertwined with the Town Manager Act and, you know, but then-
Yeah, those changes we're going to do, and we're going to bring them forward, but I wanted a dialogue with the Wage and Personnel Board first. Changes in benefits is a whole different question because you have not taken away any union benefits. So if you suddenly begin taking away non-union benefits, I don't want to say it again, Jim, but it can create problems.
Well, yeah. We're getting off subject here. We are getting off subject. So I think we should-
Well, the personnel wage bylaw changes, that is the subject, and that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we're always talking about benefits.
Personnel wage bylaw changes. This is, you can't have one without the other.
So-
When you compare them to a union benefit, and then you're talking about a non-union, I don't know, it seems to me a little sketchy. So, but anyways, I think we all agree, it needs to be looked at. Is that what we want to do?
Yeah, well, could we have a quick, I mean, the whole thing has to be reviewed. But for this May town meeting, could we have a quick warrant article? Because we know, I mean, we've discussed it. I mean, I've discussed it with Gary, you know, the Personal Wage Bylaw Committee. There should be a cap. There should be a probationary period. There should be, there should be a time when the person has to stay an employee. Those are things that can easily be put in a warrant article. And when I brought it up before, Randy had said, he came up to the microphone and said, "Oh, yes, there is going to be a warrant article in regard to the personal wage bylaw that we can easily, that we can easily do that." So even if it's not a complete review of the personal wage bylaw, at least handle this. Because I really don't want another person asking for almost $10,000 in tuition reimbursement.
To answer the board's question, to answer Ginny's question, a bylaw can be prepared quickly. Takes me a matter of a few hours. You need to tell me what you want done, and it basically needs to happen tonight or at the next meeting because the warrant is already closed.
Yeah, but we can reopen. Can't the selectmen reopen the warrant?
Board of Selectmen can put an article. You actually don't open it. You have the right to put an article anytime on.
Yeah, but we can do that.
Yes.
Well, we already have it in draft format. We just add to something that's already there.
Yes, but you have the practical problem that at your next meeting on March 5th, you are scheduled to vote the warrant, the final warrant, and send it to the AdCom. The reason being, if you vote it by March 5th and you send it to the AdCom, they have sufficient time to consider all the articles. Were you to take another couple of weeks and not finalize that warrant, then the AdCom has extremely little time, and you will most assuredly, AdCom's not here right now, but I'm pretty sure, if the chairman were here and heard you having a discussion about not finalizing the warrant till the third week of March, you'd get some pretty strong pushback. Remember, the bylaw of the town of Foxborough says February 15th. Now, we're already way past that. We're two weeks past that. So frankly, going to the 5th, they were okay on the condition I gave them the draft. This is a, this is an internal argument that the board has every year, and you always put this on me. And I said to you, "Please don't put it on me because I'm caught in between two boards." Board of Selectmen always wants to keep that warrant open so they can keep putting things in, and the AdCom gets very angry because when you keep it open past the bylaw date, they're saying you're not respecting the town's bylaw.
Okay, let's expedite it. Just, let me just, on February 5th, we talked about this. It was supposed to go into Article 6. It's not in Article 6. Article 6, we have a draft. This is one item that's risen above all the other ones. Let's do this. Ginny, work with our H Director, our HR Director, do a comparison of all the towns. I think you've already started. See what's a reasonable cap, see what's a reasonable duration, that you have to stay employment or you give the money back. Something that doesn't offend the non-union people, that it's reasonable. Put it in the draft. We'll vote it on March 5th at our next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, can Gary?
You want this all done by next Tuesday night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just add something? If I may? The only concern I have is-
Can you just come up here?
I apologize.
It's okay.
The only concern I have is that whenever there's changes to the personnel bylaw, and there does, just for the record, I've, you know, there are quite a few changes, including tuition. But the non-union staff has always been engaged. So to change this without talking to them and having what they want to say about it, maybe, maybe they don't care, maybe it's a non-issue. But to do it without asking them, because I'll tell you, I get feedback from employees who say, you know, I'm looking, they just hear me that I'm looking at this because there's a lot of changes that do need to happen eventually, and you're not going to change that without talking to us. I mean, I've heard it from probably half a dozen employees who just heard I was looking at this. So they want a reassurance that they will be included in the process. That's the only concern I have. They need to, you know, they need their opportunity as well.
Okay. And I understand that. I'm looking at, you know, the new hires versus people that have been working here for quite a while, and if I'm hearing that it's been around for 20 years, nobody's taken advantage, you know, the one person recently took advantage, it was a new hire. I don't see the angst and the anxiety. If I'm wrong, you know, between now and March 5th, I'm sure you talked to the people, the non-union and town hall. If it explodes, we'll find out on March 5th, but I don't want to miss the opportunity and set the advisory committee, as we're saying, back. We're missing deadlines. This is, you know, it was brought up on February 5th, and I anticipated it in this draft from the discussion that Randy had, the discussion that we had, that it was a kind of a no-brainer that we could put something in there.
Right.
So if I'm wrong, it'll explode on March 5th, and we'll find it, and then we'll back off. But I think it's to have an open-ended item that nobody takes advantage of, and all of a sudden everyone knows about, and to let it go, you know, I think the benefits outweigh the detriment of not doing it.
In other words, we'll take the heat.
Okay, yeah. But I appreciate what you're saying, though. Thank you.
And I've almost finished researching all the other towns to find out what they, what they all do, and I'll share all that.
Get a big head start on it.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay. 30 minutes back. We have the indemnification item for the Kenny Chesney, Taylor Swift, and Bon Jovi concerts.
I think the clerk has a motion she wants to read, right?
Okay. I move with the assent of the licensee, NPS LLC, that the time within which the licensee must comply with conditions number one and two to the event licenses granted by the board on January 15th, 2013, to hold the Kenny Chesney Country Fest concerts at Gillette Stadium on August 23rd and 24th, 2013, and the Taylor Swift concerts at Gillette Stadium on July 26th and 27th, 2013, be extended until 30 days from today, up to and including March 28th, 2013.
Second.
Motion made, seconded for the discussion.
Kevin, do you want to just-
No, just what I said earlier, negotiations are going very well. Looks very propitious that we're going to come to an agreement on the indemnity agreement and the insurance. It's not quite there yet. Probably going to need another week or two, but it's getting pretty close. And I think well within the 30 days, if you approve this motion, we'll get it done.
And that's just the discussions that you folks are having? You and the craft, or is there special counsel or something that I'm hearing about?
It's special counsel, town counsel-
Yep.
And counsel for the craft organization. My involvement is I'm working the insurance angle of it with our insurance company to try to get the insurance buttoned up to cover the gaps in the indemnity coverage so that anything that the craft organization isn't going to self-insure essentially in the indemnity agreement, there's a policy in place that covers those gaps. And again, I'm very optimistic that it'll all get done.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of the continuance motion for 30 more days?
Aye.
Motion made, passed 5-0. Okay, we have a couple, before we go into executive session, a couple of action items. We've got meeting minutes from February 5th and February 19th.
I hope that we accept the minutes. Okay. You can always do it during discussion too, sweetie, okay?
Like- Daniel, on page four, in the third, third paragraph, under Town Manager FY14 Budget, the third paragraph, it says, "Mrs. Capola said that she feels the personal wage bylaw needs to be tightened up in regard to," and you have insurance reimbursements, it was tuition? And actually, in the next line, it says, "This is covered under Article 6 of the town meeting warrant." And Randy had said that, well, it really isn't now, but Randy at the time said that there would be a warrant article six, and that could probably be done. That was, that was when Randy said, you know, we could do it. And he mentioned warrant article six.
That's the compensation.
Right. And it's, yeah. But he did mention, so.
I have one comment on page two, on the third paragraph down. Second sentence is, "The board, the board of selectmen is leading the charge on this, and executive sessions have been conducted." It should be, "And, and executive session has been conducted." Just one leading up to that. People looking for notes. On page four, discussion on the Saturday town meeting. Just that one, one sentence, no action, no further action needed to just close that out. That's it. Any other comments? Motion made on approval of meeting minutes, February 5th?
Second.
Motion made, seconded for the discussion.
Well, I tried to make it, but Ginny wanted-
Oh, you made it. I thought you were saying I made the motion. Motion made by Linda, seconded by Lorraine.
I guess motion to accept the minutes as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. February 19th, this was the brief meeting minutes that we had for the two items.
Change the last motion to 4-0-0. I was in here, on the bottom of the page.
Oh, that was Chris.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. I apologize. I finally caught, finally caught Frank in.
Okay, motion made to approve as amended, made by Linda, seconded by Ginny. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I think that's it. There was a couple-
Bill Cunningham, Mr. Chan, request for one-day beer and wine license on March 9th, 2013, Bay Colony Opera Theater. And I just made the motion.
Motion made to approve, seconded for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. And we have the last item.
Request of Kevin Whitehead from the planning boards to make four changes to the contractual zoning bylaws in article for the funds to complete the master plan.
Yeah, you're referring to zone, it's an odd provision, but ordinarily, a citizen brings a zoning change forward, and then they bring it to you. That's what the statute requires, and then you refer it to the zoning board for study and a report back. Sometimes the zoning board itself proposes the change through dialogue with other people or the planner or whatever, and, but the law requires them to report it to you. You must then report it back to them for study and a recommendation to the town meeting. So it's kind of an odd process, but that's why I have to vote to send it back to them.
Can we ask questions? Do you know about the interim regulations piece of it?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know any about any of this because right now, it's just going back to them, and we don't even know exactly how it's all going to emerge when it comes back.
Okay, so this is going back?
Yeah, so I don't really study it a lot until I know what really finally comes back.
Before we close, Kevin, you had emailed out-
Did you pass that motion? I'm sorry?
No, we still on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded.
What's the motion?
The motion is to refer the zoning articles in the memo back to the planning board for study, for review.
Didn't hear you say that, Mark.
I read it earlier.
Oh.
I did, that's why I read it earlier. So, and they share and share.
You want to talk about that? Let's see.
No.
I'll just kind of, maybe just a quick overview of what we're about to vote on.
I took the liberty of scheduling the public hearings, figuring that you would probably send it back to me posthaste. And the public hearings are scheduled for this Thursday evening, starting at 8:00, I believe. And we'll have a full report of what they mean and what the reasons are for the five articles then. And if any of you have questions or any of the public, just give me a call and I'll walk you through it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question on the articles that are, we're going to be getting on the 5th. You sent out a draft, not specific to any of the articles, but a lot of these have headers, "Board of Selectmen for the Planning Board" in their zoning articles, or "Board of Selectmen".
Yeah, I've actually been changing some of those because basically, the only two titles you have on there, "Board of Selectmen" and "Planning Board," and that's not been the tradition. Usually what happens is it's for somebody or it's a slash with somebody because, and the AdCom brought that to my attention because they said, "Well, we're going to start calling people in to discuss these. Are we calling the selectmen for all these?" And I said, "No." So I'm actually been over here during the meeting, writing descriptive titles. Some of these are actually town managers, some of the CIP committees, some are the school committees, some, so on and on, and we'll get that fixed.
So whoever authors it and brings it forward?
Yeah, we'll get that fixed.
They'll bring it to the selectmen to put it on, but we're not names on it.
Sometimes, right, but you actually, if they're not citizens petitions, because town manager, for instance, has no power to put an article in the warrant. So it's "Board of Selectmen slash Town Manager," or, you know, whatever we-
But like, for instance, a stretch energy code or a zoning change, it shouldn't say "Selectmen" on it, it should say "Planning Board."
Well, it'll, the planning board ones will say "Planning Board." Now, only because that's been the tradition. The others, like the stretch energy code, if you approve that, it would probably say "Selectmen slash Building Commissioner slash Town Manager." We're the actual proponents putting it forward. And so what we do is we try to put "Board of Selectmen" because, again, it's just tradition.
Yeah, but I did speak to Frank a little bit about it because I was a little confused. Something like an article that's brought by somebody else by saying "Selectmen," it looks like we support it. Okay? For instance, if a planning board comes through and they have zoning, they'll put their name on it.
Yeah.
But if it says "Planning Board," it looks like we endorse it. We'll endorse it being on to vote.
If you folks prefer to not have it say "Board of Selectmen," just tell me and I can take care of that for you, not a problem.
I think that, but I think that's what I'm looking for. Whoever brings it forward, their name is on it.
Okay.
And they, and questions get raised to them, they present it at town meeting.
Yep.
And just because it's on the warrant article doesn't mean it's from the selectmen. And I think that's the way it's been. We kind of got off course a little bit, but I think that's-
Or it's been mutually sponsored or something. It's, you know, but I'd like to let it go, come right from the source.
But there's nothing in the, our bylaws that says a selectman's name has to be on it if it's not our article, correct?
No, no, no bylaw.
Fair enough. Okay.
Yeah, well, it's just discussion, yeah.
Oh, from that, okay. So the motion was made, was it seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Lorraine. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Motion to go on executive session.
Before we do that, under action items, you've got the Invensus TIF proposal. Just want to let you know that we took a look at it, conferred with council today. He did say it's a public record. We called Invensus to be sure. Even though it's public, we just wanted to circle back, make sure they understand we have to release it. They were actually very fine with it. They said, "Sure." So I've given it to the press as of a few minutes ago. I don't want you to read it in the paper. Here you go. That's now public information.
Do you need one for the minutes?
No, it's not, we're not putting it in the minutes. I'm just giving it to you as a courtesy so you see it. You're not, I don't want you seeing it for the first time in the press. You're not, I don't want you seeing it for the first time in the press.
Very nice. We all set then?
Yes.
All right, making the motion to executive session to discuss.
Deployment of security personnel and, and litigation, I have one litigation update.
Solely to return to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor? Linda?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a mental block. And Jim says yes, so. Thank you all, thank you for watching, listening, participating.
4 minutes.